I didn't start. Did the meeting start?
Yeah, I think that was me. My audible?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Okay, we will call this. We'll call this meeting to order. The notice requirement filed for the open public meeting law. Satisfied, notice is properly given, said notice having been sent into the Cury News. On Tuesday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, as well as posted on the city's website.
Council members, Brooke Jones.
Present.
Cherry.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
McCray.
Present.
Wyatt.
Present.
Vice President Sessions.
Present.
And Council President Hocke.
Present.
We have all members present for this virtual meeting in a corner.
Okay, thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President, do you have the updated script?
I do.
Humbly ask God to give her peace and love her charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will. To grant the life and spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
All right, thank you. All right, first, with the approval of minutes, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of our our regular meeting, that was June sixteen, two thousand twenty-five.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the meetings, the minutes of the meeting have been approved. Okay, we'll start with any communications from the mayor, if there are any. Mayor, the floor is yours, or BA.
Um, I don't believe. Oh, go ahead, Mayor.
No, um, Mr. President, I would just like to acknowledge the events of the last two weeks, which I am sure that everyone in attendance, everyone is familiar with those events. And to let the public know that we continue to do all that we can to provide assistance to our residents and to be responsive to their needs. And one of the things that we will be doing this coming Saturday is that we will provide assistance based on a group of volunteers that have pledged to make themselves available to assist homeowners who have things in their basements that need to be brought out of the basement onto the curbs or in their backyards. And so we will have a group of volunteers. And this would be for individuals who are not able to do it for themselves. And we asking those individuals to call my office at City Hall, give their names and addresses. And we will have a volunteer or volunteers come to their addresses and provide them with the assistance that they need in order to move those damage items to the curb to be picked up by our solid waste and sewer and DPW departments. And that's all I have at this time. I'm sure there'll be more as we go through the meeting. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Mayor. Appreciate everything that's been done by your administration, led by many departments. Everybody's has had a hand in it, but but DPW has has done an amazing job and Sergeant Keisha Bethia in her new role has rolled up her sleeves and 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 got us through us through this as 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 much as possible. It's just been a really difficult, trying and tragic time for our city. And, you know, we just continue to pray that that we don't experience more of these natural disasters. Because it's 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 certainly been taxing on us. But it certainly helps to have a steady, steady hand of leadership through these, through these things. So we will now move on. Well, discussion items, economic development presentation. Yes.
With your permission, if you can allow the business administrator to also speak to the public about the benefit concert, I think it's important to talk about that at the top and at the bottom of the meeting.
All right, let's, let's, let's hear it.
Yeah, I'd just like to encourage everybody to come out. We will be having a benefit concert at four P M. at the Plainfield, at the high school. And we have a lot of great acts that have volunteered their time to perform. Some of them are, you know, acts that were previously going to perform and and due to the first tragedy, we're unable to. We're hoping to have resources there as well for anybody who needs, and we will be accepting donations to create a trust account that people can apply for grants for in order to recover from things they, you know, home damage and flood flood damage in their homes. So we we hope to have a good turnout this Sunday, four o'clock at the high school.
And checks can be made payable to the city of Plainfield with storm recovery on the memo line. We prefer checks, but cash will be accepted as well. And this event is not really about the celebration and the music. It's more about the money. And so the goal is to raise as much as we can to help as many people as we can. So thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, well, now move to discussion items from economic development.
Um, Council President, I can hold my item until the my section for the resolution, or I could present it now. Which would you prefer?
I actually do not have a preference, so I'll I'll allow you to choose.
I'll hold until that section.
All right, no problem. All right, so we'll move to consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. Uh, we now move on to ordinance on second reading and final passage. Madam Deputy, please read MC twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four by title and certify its compliance with all statutory legal requirements.
MC twenty twenty-five twenty-four is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the county of Union granting its exemption pursuant to the long Simpson Law redevelopment area bond financing law with respect to certain property identified on the city's tax map, block three zero seven, lots twenty point zero one, twenty-nine point zero one, thirty-one point zero one, thirty-five and thirty-six, and designated in the city's tax records as four twelve dash sixteen East Second Street, twenty-eight dash twenty-six Richmond Street, three forty-seven dash three forty-seven dash four twenty-three East Third Street, three forty-three dash forty-five East Third Street, and three thirty-nine forty-one East Third Street, Plainfield, New Jersey, and authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with SRV Plainfield Re Urban Renewal LLC and authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
No one has raised their hand.
Okay. Public comment is now closed. Okay, may I have a motion to adopt this?
Go move.
Second.
Clark, may we have a roll call?
Council members, Brooke Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt. Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hocke.
Yes.
That unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Okay, thank you. Madam Deputy, please read MC twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five by title and certify its legal compliance.
MC twenty-five twenty-five is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield, county of Union, New Jersey, the Thirteenth Amendment, the hundred ninety-seven scattered sites redevelopment plan dated April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing on this ordinance was published in the Courier-News on June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance specifically.
No one has their hand raised.
Still no one?
No.
Okay. I'll close public comment. I have a motion in the second to to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage.
So move.
Second.
Clark, when we have a roll call.
Council members, Brooke Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Gospel of the Hocke, yes. All right, thank you. We now move on to public comments limited to resolutions and motions being considered this evening. Total of thirty of thirty minutes has been allocated for the same. Uh, the each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Name. And remember, we're not giving addresses, so name and city that you're from is sufficient.
Uh, my name is Dr. Laura N. Diaz. I am a pediatrician. I live in Plainfield, New Jersey. Am I able to be heard? Okay, wonderful. I prepared a small statement regarding the ordinance that's being proposed for horses being banned on the Plainfield streets. Um, so I've lived in Plainfield for ten years. I'm a homeowner. I'm a board certified pediatrician. I care for many children in Plainfield. I practice in the area. I accept Medicaid, so I take care of a lot of our city's children. I'm here today to speak firmly against the proposed ordinance banning horses on Plainfield's public streets. As a pediatrician, I want to start by emphasizing the profound mental health benefits that horses offer children. Research shows that interacting with horses reduces anxiety, builds emotional regulation, increases confidence, especially for children with ADHD, autism, and trauma histories. Even seeing a horse in a public space has been shown in studies to be associated with lower stress, a stronger sense of connection. Many children are overstimulated in the digital world, and so them being exposed to horses is going to help them connect with nature. Removing horses from our streets eliminates one of the few enriching hands-on experiences still available to many of our children in their neighborhoods. The ordinance directly contradicts state law. New Jersey statutes protect horses on roadways. New Jersey statutes such as NJSA thirty-nine semicolon four to seventy-two explicitly recognize the right of horses to share public roadways. Motorists are required to slow down and yield to horses, reinforcing that equine presence is lawful and protected. It's important to recognize that horseback riding in Plainfield is not new. The crazy faith riders, who I hope will make themselves known during this meeting, have been riding on our streets for over thirty years. They're well-known and respected in the city. They're they're consistently celebrated in the Fourth of July Parade, which is an event that brings joy and unity to the entire community. The tradition was never treated as a nuisance or a problem until now. Trying to ban horses from the streets that they've peacefully traveled for decades disrespects their history, and it sends the wrong message about who and what we value in our city. Frankly, I must also say that as a resident and professional, I'm really disappointed that this is even being considered as an ordinance. Political differences should never result in punitive policy, especially when that policy undermines community traditions and restricts healthy engagement for youth and families. I have two sons. My youngest enjoys riding. It would be a disappointment to know that he is no longer able to participate, not only with the crazy faith riders, but with other horse communities who often ride through the city. And I would like to be clear, this is not a public safety issue. There are many large cities which allow horses such as New York, Philadelphia, and Chicago. Even in high traffic zones, there are mounted police patrols, carriage rides, and equestrian events which are all managed safely in places with millions of residents. If those cities can accommodate horses, there is no reason Plainfield cannot do the same. Plainfield should not reject its rural roots or recreational potential under the weight of political posturing. This ordinance conflicts with state law. It takes away meaningful community-based opportunities for recreation, tradition, and connection. And I am urging this council to reject the proposed ban. I would be happy to see you adopt inclusive, reasonable regulations that honor our laws and our community values. But for the sake of our children and for my children, I am asking that you seriously reconsider this ordinance so that it can be more inclusive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, could just get someone to show their hands. Can you hear my voice? All right, cool. Thank you. So my name is Dr. Cox, and I come before you, Dr. Tristan Cox, excuse me. And I come before you not just as a resident, but a fourth generation Plainfielder, someone who is deeply rooted in this city's history and its promise. About fifteen years ago, I witnessed something unforgettable. A man by the name of J.R. riding his horse through the streets of Plainfield. I was wild, not just by the beauty of the animals, but his presence, his dignity, and the pride that came with it. God rest his soul. He recently passed away. That moment led me to connect with the crazy faith riders of New Jersey. Since then, I've become a rider myself and have taken part in countless community rides throughout Plainfield. I've also partnered with Watch Young Stables to bring our youth, especially those from communities who rarely, if ever, get access to this experience face to face with horses. These rides are about far more than recreation. They're about connection, healing, culture, and exposure to something greater than ourselves. And now we're considering an ordinance that would effectively erase that presence from our city. I urge you, don't do it. This proposal sends the wrong message and takes away something powerful and positive that has inspired residents for over decades, many decades. Uh, let me also be clear, a permit system is not the solution. It's just a back door to more red tape, unnecessary control, and a kind of selective enforcement that has historically shut people out. The system would be a subject to the whims of the powers that be, and that's not fair or a righteous path forward. Respectfully and humbly, I ask the council to remove this ordinance from consideration, honor the people who have worked tirelessly to bring horses and equine activities into our communities, not just as animals, but symbols of hope, pride, and tradition to hopefully inspire the young child that was Tristan of fifteen years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name, name and city.
Good evening, council members. My name is Richard Anderson. I was born and raised in the Queen City. I'm a proud graduate of Plainfield High School, class of nineteen eighty-six, and I was the football captain. My father served as head custodian at Cook School for thirty years while my mom worked at RCA. They raised us with strong values of faith, discipline, and community love. Our family made history as the first black family to purchase a home on West Ave Street. I hold degrees from Morehouse College, Princeton Theological Seminary, and a master of social work from Rutgers University as of May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'm a social worker in training, and I speak today with personal conviction and professional responsibility. I oppose the proposed ordinance banning horses in the city of Plainfield. This ordinance is not just about horses. It's about access, equity, and healing. Horses saved my life as a child, and now as a professional, I use them to help save the lives of others. Equine therapy is an evidence-based intervention that has been proven to reduce suicidal ideation, particularly among Black and Hispanic youth who are disproportionately affected by depression, trauma, and lack of access to mental health services. A two thousand thirteen study by Pendry and Roeder demonstrated that equine assisted activities help regulate stress hormones in youth resulting in healthier emotional outcomes. This is especially critical when we note that Black adolescents are experiencing the highest increase in suicide rates among all racial groups, according to the CDC. The National Association of Social Workers Code of Ethics mandates that social workers challenge social injustice and advocate for vulnerable populations. This ordinance would strip Plainfield's youth of a vital therapeutic resource and erase a cherished part of our history and community fabric. Plainfield's youth deserve access to non-traditional, culturally relevant therapeutic modalities, especially when traditional systems often fail them. Horses do not just provide entertainment, they offer healing, they create opportunities for connection, discipline, and trust. Since nineteen ninety-nine, I have brought horses to the Plainfield Fourth of July Parade and into our public schools through our organization, the Crazy Faith Riders of New Jersey. We are an approved vendor of PHS and Jefferson School, where we give rides to children, many of whom experience this joy for the very first time. These moments are not merely fun, they are therapeutic. As a member of the clergy, I find it ironic that while Jesus rode into Jerusalem on a donkey, the Book of Revelation states that he will return on a horse. This proposed ordinance would effectively declare him unwelcome to return to Plainfield.
Council President, Speaker signs up.
Okay, thank you. Name and city affiliation. This floor is yours.
Hello?
Name and affiliation, the floor is yours.
Oh, sure. I wasn't sure if you were talking to me. Hi. Quanay Palmer Chambliss, Plainfield, New Jersey. I am also here to talk about the proposed ordinance to amend the animal ordinance to include language about horses in the city of Plainfield. It's it's and everybody has done such a wonderful job with with the legal aspect of it, the historic aspect of it, the mental health aspect of it, but I would like to talk about the desire to change it and where it came from. If I'm correct, listening to people, and I'm also familiar with the crazy faith riders, they have done Juneteenth events for us in Rawaway, there has never been an issue where someone decided that they needed to amend a sitting ordinance for horses in the city of Plainfield. So I wonder what happened to create the need that the BA's office, represented from someone who does not have a history in the African-American community in Plainfield, would write or propose an amendment to change what we have already had and has done no harm to anyone. It didn't even do any harm to the mayoral campaign because you won. Right? All of you all who who support it are sitting mayor. You won. So why the retaliatory things that happening now? You won. Let it go. You seem very petty and immature for using this as an opportunity to get back at someone for something that they did that you did not appreciate. It's unnecessary. We have other things in this city that we need to be looking at, and bad enough, you don't even have enough people to enforce the codes that you already have on the books. Yet you want to add something else and then make it a financial burden. That five hundred, fifteen hundred, three thousand dollar fine is absolutely ridiculous and is absolutely punitive. And as African-American people who know that we have a six hundred thousand dollar wealth gap, why would you put this type of infringement on the backs of our people? It's Black men who were riding horses through this town. I haven't seen anybody white riding the horses. It's been Black people, and why would you inflict that try to inflict that injury on them? So I urge all of the council people, especially my councilperson, Mr. Graham, to vote no on advancing this ordinance. It's unnecessary, it's bad timing, and it makes every last one of you all look immature and petty. Do better. Thank you very much.
Um, yes, Nancy Pivvar, uh, Plainfield. Um, I agree with all the speakers before me. I remember as a little child, um, the horses that would ride up through my neighborhood when the ragman came through or the vegetable people came through and the scissors man came through. I don't think this ordinance is necessary. But I also want to speak on two seventy-one about the UEZ. I understand, and I read some of it, that some of the residences' areas are going to be taken out, but I don't understand why the entire, um, front street from Gerard Avenue all the way to Clinton Avenue, where there's residence homes there, why they're included in the UEZ and why those sections weren't taken out. Thank you very much.
Name and address, name and city affiliation, excuse me. Floor is yours, Ms. Price. Unmute yourself, Leslie Price.
Good evening. This is Leslie Hall Price. I'm the resident of Plainfield, New Jersey. I apologize because I didn't know if I was muted or not, but I won't take much time, but I have been a volunteer at Petty Farm, which is a private horse farm in Edison, New Jersey, very close to Plainfield for almost two years next week. And the amount of joy, the amount of of access and the amount of happiness that has been given to children, families, and teachers throughout the Plainfield area because of that location or that space is remarkable, unbelievable, and just amazing. And as others spoke earlier, the history of horsemanship and horse riding in Plainfield has been here for many, 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 many years, and there's never been any problem. So if this is all a result of something that happened recently, I would love for the council to make it clear to the public what happened, like another person said, or to definitely reconsider this need or necessity to have an ordinance in the first place. The horses, they're majestic, they're mystical, they're spiritual, they bring healing not only to children but to adults who are going through issues. And for the last few weeks, we have had so much pain here and unexpected trauma here in Plainfield. Um, we're all affected by it. So now on top of what's happened recently, which was out of our control, for this to come up, it just makes no sense. And I just will close by saying, as an adult, as a Plainfield resident, being here And I just will close by saying, as an adult, as a Plainfield resident, being here since I was twelve, being in the school district, working with children every day, there's, you can ask anyone that knows me, there is not one day that I don't talk about horses, getting more children involved, giving them more access, and making this a wholesome opportunity for all, especially the children and families of Plainfield who just don't have anything a lot of times to begin with. Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Hello, hi, my name is Jay Sean Martinez, I'm a resident of Plainfield. I'm also speaking on behalf of the ordinance with so, horses on on public ways. Um, so in the ordinance, it states, um, whereas incidents involving the urination and defecation of horses in public spaces contribute to unsanitary conditions and present a public health concern for residents and city maintenance personnel. Um, one, I studied um public health in undergrad, so I do have a little bit of research on this. Um, I think it's kind of ironic how last council meeting, um, a resident brought up the stray cats and the cat colonies in Plainfield, and basically was brushed off how, um, they were going to look inside the budget, but it was a very low budget. You you know, you guys emphasized it was a very low budget to um for the trap and release programs, but feral cats and stray cats are way bigger public health issue than horses that are actually cared for and have annual veterinary visits and are have antibiotics and, you know, vaccines and medications to for these animals, but you guys are so quick to ban horseback riding on our streets, but aren't doing anything for the stray cats in Plainfield. Banning horseback riding in the city, an activity that occurs only a few times a year and poses little to no public health risk, feels misplaced. Horse manure, especially from properly cared-for animals, breaks down quickly and rarely transmits diseases. Meanwhile, the ongoing issue of stray cat, stray and feral cat colonies continues to be overlooked. These cats, these cats present a significantly greater health concern due to parasites and bacteria in their feces, such as Toxoplasma gondii, which can contaminate soil, water, and community spaces. And I do work in the healthcare, more so within pediatrics, and these specifically are at risk for pregnant women and children. These are on playgrounds, these are on our yards, and not even just from stray cats, from cats from within owners who don't regularly check their animals. So these are on our lawns, our parks, these are more of a risk to pregnant women and children than manure from horses. And to even be more clear, there are bags to catch manure coming from horses. So why don't we implement that be a rule for these horses to catch the manure, not just ban it and create a permit? That that's absurd. Why, why prioritize banning a rare, low-impact activity like horseback riding while ignoring a persistent public health issue that affects our neighborhoods year-round? I strongly encourage the council to focus on developing a real situation, solution for the stray cat population, though TNR programs, public education, and responsible feeding policies before targeting activity that brings minimal risk to our community. That, you can look it up, um, the the state shows numbers of people getting sick from from stray cat bites, stray cat scratches, and literally these parasites and bacteria found only in cat feces in in our in in children and pregnant women around the state, and even probably the city, especially with our city. So, you know, we're sitting here banning horses, but we're neglecting actual issues that people actually complain about. Like, who genuinely has complained about who horsemen were on our streets? I have never heard that, but I do hear people.
Name and affi-, name and city for the record.
Vin Kelski, would be a place in Plainfield, and I usually don't give my credentials, but I am a veterinarian, University of Pennsylvania, nineteen eighty-eight, and living in Plainfield for over forty years. I am a believer in safety, and I do not want to transfer the uh attention, the whatever you want to call it, from horses to cats and make them the target animal. And I am a proponent, I am, cats and my, and horses are my flocks. I do not, well, I do understand the attention on the horse, on the horses, and I'm I'm a proponent of safety for horses as well, and well-being for them. I think this is a farce. I think it's this resolution, this ordinance is directed um against a particular individual who ran against Mr. Matt. I would urge you all to look into your hearts and vote against this ordinance. I'm not sure if you.
Thank you so much.
Heard my.
Heard everything.
Okay.
We appreciate.
Do the right thing, guys and girls, do the right thing. And I, I may also say one other thing, I did speak with Dr. Sathoms, and she told me that she got many communications from residents who were complaining about or thought the horses were a problem, and she saw some problems herself. So I am looking, if she's going to vote for this uh ordinance, I'm looking for her to make those um comments. Thank you.
Yeah, her comments have concluded, she's still on there. Thank you. Name and city affiliation, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers Frank, you might be on too many devices because there's echoing, but the floor is yours. I think she's having technical difficulties, uh, we'll need to move on to the next caller.
Hello?
Yes, phone number ending in three four one, floor is yours, name.
Yeah.
City.
Thank you, Norma Rogers Frank, um, from Plainfield, New Jersey. Thank you for hearing me out. I am calling in reference to ordinance, the new ordinance, MC twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two, which is the old MC twenty twenty-five dash sixteen. So I just, I have a statement I wrote, I just wanted to say first, good evening, and I'd like to thank the city council for reconsidering um MC twenty twenty-five sixteen or thirty-two, as it is now numbered, um, and adding it back to the agenda, and reconsidering the decision to ban parking on the south side of the twelve hundred block of Watchon Avenue, because it speaks volume about your commitment to hearing our voices. My neighbors and I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be heard regarding this matter, and the proposed ban disproportionately affects the quality of life of many residents while addressing the complaints of only a few. Watchon Avenue spans two miles from Bridge Street to Leland Avenue, and to restrict parking on a single block from Kingsington Avenue to Hillside Avenue due to concerns tied to one house is not only unfair, but it sets a concerning precedence. As I shared at last month's meeting, we urged the council to resolve the issue with the individual properly directly rather than penalizing the entire neighborhood. So on behalf of myself and the neighbors, thank you once again for listening to us and voting to re- and hopefully voting to repeal the no-parking restriction on the twelve hundred block of Watchon Avenue. Your responsive strengthens the trust between the council and the community. And I've been living here at the same address for fourteen years, um, and as I stated last time, this will be a quality-of-life issue for myself and some of my other neighbors. So thank you for bring, having it brought back up, um, hearing us and reconsidering voting against, um, so voting to appeal this tonight. I appreciate each of you, thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, Ms. Hoffman, please unmute yourself, name and city, floor is yours.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Matt, my name is uh Glenn Quorky Johnson. Uh, I'm a lifelong resident of Plainfield, New Jersey. I operate and manage a horse farm within stone's throw of Plainfield, New Jersey. Uh, I'm on here tonight at the meeting to ask that you uh not pass the ordinance for banning horses in New Jersey. I've been involved in horses most of my life, within the last ten years, as a manager of a small horse farm, sixteen horses, and I'm there every day. My team, as I call them, we have been riding into Plainfield for the past ten years without incident. Okay, we are respectful of the community. We are respectful to the citizens, we ride through Edison, South Plainfield, and then into Plainfield. Last ten years we've been doing it, we have had not one incident involving safety with the horses. We have always been respectful to clean up after the horses, whether I'm driving my pickup truck or, as someone stated earlier, a bag where the riders will hop off their horse, clean up, and continue on their way. Okay, um, it would be a disservice to horse owners, uh, horsemanship enthusiasts, and the city of Plainfield and their citizens. We take pride in training our horses to be street safe, okay? Um, it takes a lot to train a horse to be street safe. I uh am willing to open up my place to any member of the council. You can come by and see me, um, I'm in Edison, and I hope that you guys do not pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Council President, before we move on to the next speaker, seven fifty-five would have been uh thirty minutes for public comments, so we have time for one more speaker.
Thank you.
Good, good evening.
Good evening.
Person seems to have disappeared.
Okay.
Would you like me to go for the next?
Yes, please. Ms. Smith, name and address, name and city affiliation for the record. Floor is yours. Ms. Smith?
The person is unmuted, but I'm not hearing anything.
Yeah, I'm not either.
I'll go on to the next.
Please. Dr. Griffin is the name on the screen. Unmute yourself, name and a city affiliation, floor is yours.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Dr. Griffin, um, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, hello to the council and also to the mayor. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of Plainfield, and I want to express my concern about the proposed um ban on horseback riding. Uh, it's been a tradition, uh, since I was a little kid. I remember going to the Fourth of July parade and seeing the horses in the parade, and it has been a very memorable experience. And as of recently, it's been used not only as to embrace cultural heritage in the city of Plainfield, but as a form of peaceful civic engagement. Um, and as someone who's lived here my entire entire life, I believe that we should be cautious about uh making temporary political tensions uh ri- rise as a result of permanent decisions and um make sure that we are embracing civic engagement. So a ban of this nature could possibly erase the meaning of what horse riding has meant to the city and the city's identity. And I just hope that the council will reconsider um their decision on banning uh horseback riding in the city and remember the history, as well as consider the safety, but remember the history and remember the right for everyone to engage.
Thank you so much, Dr. Griffin. Welcome, I appreciate you. Okay, uh, public comments is now closed, uh, we will move along to resolutions uh for consideration uh from the legislative body. Uh, are there any questions of resolution R two fifty-seven dash one five? Okay, may I have a motion to approve uh that resolution?
Some of.
Uh, roll call, clerk.
Council members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Cecil.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes. Okay, uh, would the business administrator present their items?
Yes, thank you, Council President. We only have one item this evening, and it is a resolution for advice and consent to the appointment of Pierre Emmanuel Almonarche for um who will be succeeding Judge Rourke, who has been appointed to the Superior Court bench.
Okay, any questions? Okay, may I have a motion to approve?
Don't move. Second.
Clerk, roll call, please.
Members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt. Defense. Cecil.
Yes.
Council President.
Yes.
Resolution will be done.
Okay, thank you, uh, would the Corporation Council present their items?
Thank you, Council President, I have two items for consideration this evening. Uh, both are appropriations uh for attorneys handling redevelopment matters uh within the city. Uh, one is for our primary redevelopment council, uh, McManam and Scotland Embowman. Um, this is an additional appropriation of ten thousand dollars, which would make the total for this year forty-five thousand dollars. And the second is to the Souter Law Group, it's an additional five thousand dollars to bring the total to twenty thousand dollars for the year. Those are the two items for consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Any questions from council members regarding these two items? Okay, seem like very modest increases, I've yeah, I've known attorney bills to be more than that, but.
Council President, I also neglected to mention, these these are within the budget for the Office of Corporation Council. Uh, there, this is, this is within the budget, there's no uh need to extend, expand the budget for these appropriations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, okay, um, there are no questions from council, may I have a motion to approve in a second?
Don't move. Second.
Okay, clerk, roll call, please.
Roll, roll call on Resolution two fifty-nine and two sixty, council members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Cecil.
Yes.
And Council President.
Yes.
Those two resolutions have been approved.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we're going to move to the Department of Finance, we have Resolutions two sixty-one, twenty-five, two sixty-four, twenty-five. Uh, Finance Director, good evening, uh, please your pre- present your items.
Okay, uh, good evening all. I will read Resolution two sixty-one as twenty-five in its entirety, and then I will continue with the other resolutions. Um, Resolution to amend the twenty twenty-five budget. Whereas the local municipal budget for the year twenty twenty-five was approved on the twenty-first day of April twenty twenty-five, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as as advertised, and whereas the council desires to amend said budget. Now therefore be it be resolved by the Council of the City of Plainfield County of Union that the following amendments to the approved budget for twenty twenty-five be made. Current fund, general revenues, number one, surplus anticipated from ten million to nine million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. Total surplus anticipated, ten million, nine hun- from ten million to nine million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. Number two, um. Number two, um, miscellaneous revenues, section A, local revenues, interest and cost on taxes, six hundred and twenty-seven, six hundred, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars to six hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Payments in lieu of taxes from two hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred to three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred. Total, section A, local revenues, eight million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents to eight million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Section B, state aid without offsetting appropriations of the state aid from zero to nine hundred and fifty-six thousand. Total, section B, state aid without offsetting appropri- appropriations, seven million, eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars to eight million, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Section G, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of Director of Local Government Services. Other special items, sewer utility operating surplus of prior year from six million dollars to five million and forty-four thousand dollars. Total, section F, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of Director of Local Government Services se- from seven million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventeen cents to six million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Summary of revenues, number one, surplus anticipated from ten million to nine million, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, miscellaneous revenue, total, section A, local revenues from eight million, eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents to eight million, nine hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents. Total, section B, state aid without offsetting appropriations from seven million, eight hundred and seventy dollars, a seven, eight hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars to eight million, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, seven hun- eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars. Total, section G, special items of general revenue anticipated with prior written consent of Director of Local Government Services from seven million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventeen cents to six million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and seventeen cents. Total, miscellaneous revenues from thirty-two million, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars, six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents to thirty-two thousand, thirty million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. And subtotal general revenues from forty-four million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents to forty-four million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty-seven cents. And total general revenues from one hundred and eight thousand, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents to one hundred and eight thousand, seventy-six, one hundred and eight million, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Be it therefore resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be filed forthwith in the Office of the Directors of Local Government Services for her certification of the twenty twenty-five local municipal budget so amended. It is hereby certified that this is a true copy of a resolution amended the budget adopted by the City Council on the sixth day of July twenty twenty-five, adopted by City Council of July twenty twenty-five. That was the amendment, and now my next resolution would be the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-five municipal budget in the amount of one hundred and eight million and seventy-six, seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. Parking utility budget in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifteen thousand. Sewer utility budget in the amount of nine million, three hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and five dollars, and the solid waste utility budget in the amount of fourteen million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Third item, third resolution, resolution number R two sixty-three dash twenty-five is resolution authorizing approval for the chapter one fifty-nine to amend twenty twenty-five municipal budget by inserting fifteen items of revenue and appropriation in accordance with NJSA forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven, totally one million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, si- four hundred and sixty-three dollars. And my final resolution, Resolution two sixty-four dash twenty-five, is resolution authorizing the approval to cancel taxes in the amount of nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents due to one hundred percent disabled veteran exemptions. Are there any questions?
Council President, can I just, um, direct, thank you, Director Gill, can I just make one comment on those items?
Yeah.
I just want to clarify for the council and for anyone from the C-Back who's on, or anyone from the public, that the budget cha- the budget amendment is, there is no increase to the budget, there's no decrease, it's budget neutral. All we're doing is simply, we got more revenue via the pilots that we have, and also an appropriation from the state for a grant that was re-appropriated to revenue, and so because we have those, that money, we can take less from our surplus. So, um, it is a budget neutral amendment, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood this, it's the same dollar figure that you were originally introduced.
Thank you. Okay, questions from council?
Council President, I have a question for Resolution R two sixty-one dash twenty-five, and pardon me, Director Morris Gill, if you answered this question. What is the difference year over year for the school board portion, I see it's sixty-one million, what was the amount last year?
R six, two sixty-one dash twenty-five, um, did you say R two sixty-one dash twenty-five? The school board portion is usually around twenty-seven million, but I have a check and tell you what the what, which resolution are you referring to again?
R two sixty-one dash twenty-five.
Um, I can check, but I think it's twen- about twenty-nine million this year, and it was about twenty-seven last, last year.
But I. If we look in line, and maybe I'm, I'm looking at this incorrectly, if we look at line three, it says sixty-one million amount to be raised by taxation for schools.
I'm not looking at the same document, I don't have the document that you're looking at, but, um.
We're raising anything for the schools, that sixty-one million is the, is the, uh, tax levy for the, the, uh, city only. The city doesn't raise that levy.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mayor, you're muted, I think he's trying to speak.
Yeah, so I was attempting to say that we take no actions on any budget obligations for the school. So nothing you do tonight is about the schools and their budgets, nothing. That's an autonomous body, and you have no control, nothing you do tonight is about the schools.
Thank you.
Question.
Go right ahead, Council Vice President.
So, I, I understand that the school is autonomous, particularly in their operations, as well as in their fiscal, uh, management, but in terms of what they ask of the city and we turn and give to them, was there an increase from what they asked for last year in comparison to what they're asking for this year? Is that a part of your presentation?
Yes, Ricky, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure that there was an increase of about two million.
Slightly over two million, that's correct.
Right.
Thank you.
Further questions from council members? Okay, uh, may I have a motion to approve Resolution two sixty-one, twenty-five, authorizing the budget amendment?
So moved.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Roll call on Resolution two sixty-one, twenty-five, council members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
That unanimous, this resolution has been approved.
Okay, thank you, uh, may I have a motion to approve the Resolution two sixty-two, twenty-five, authorizing the op- adoption of the calendar year twenty twenty-five municipal operating budget?
So moved. Second.
Maybe have a roll call.
Resolution, uh, roll call on Resolution two sixty-two, twenty-five, council members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
That is unanimous, the budget has been adopted.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve Resolutions two sixty-three and two sixty-four dash twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, roll call on Resolution two sixty-three and two sixty-four, council member Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
That is unanimous, those two resolutions have been adopted.
All right, thank you. Uh, would the police department present their items?
Council President, I'll be speaking on behalf of Director Apni this evening. He has two items, the first is approval to apply for and accept the New Jersey Division of Highway and Safety Pedestrian Safety and Education Grant for twenty-two thousand and twenty-five dollars, and that will be an education and enforcement initiative. Um, and he will also be purchasing radar signs so that the pedestrian, the cars could be aware of how fast they're going in areas that are heavily, um, heavy, have heavy pedestrian traffic. And his second resolution is seeking permission for a street encroachment for National Night Out, which is coming August fifth this year. And as you know, um, we tend to, we, we ask for permission to close down Watchung over in front of City Hall so that we can have some events out there. Those are his two items.
Okay, questions from council members? Okay, can we have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, all of those in, uh, let's have a roll call.
Roll call on Resolution two sixty-five and two sixty-six, council members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
That is, those, those two resolutions have been adopted.
Okay, we'll move on to the fire department, uh, go right ahead.
Okay, that's me again. Um, the fire department only has one item on this evening, and it is a contract, uh, for paving, for additional paving that they're going to be doing as part of their engine for site improvement. Um, and that's it, it's, it's just for fifty-five hundred.
Okay, questions from council members? Motion in a second, please.
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call.
On Resolution two six-seven, twenty-five, council members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
Resolution has been adopted.
Okay, the Department of Public Works, uh, Director, please present your items.
Okay, that's going to be me again. Um, so the Department of Public Works has three items this evening. The first one is seeking permission to submit a grant to the DOT for, um, Bellevue Ave and Bellevue Court to do milling and paving, this would be a twenty twenty-six project, and, um, assuming we get this grant, it would be fully grant funded. The second resolution is the award of a contract to, uh, for the Sidler Field ADA accessible playground improvements. I believe we've been talking about how we're working to make all of the playgrounds ADA accessible. This is being awarded to the lowest responsible bidder in the RFP process, the amount is four hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, and that's entirely funded by Green Acres. And the third resolution that he has is a change order for eleven thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars, and this is for the speed humps, there were some speed humps that had to be shaved down, um, and they were in bad condition, so that, that's what the change order is for, so that, um, we can have the contractor either shave down the speed humps where they need it and, and fix some of them that residents have come to us to complain about. And those are his items.
All right, questions from council members? Okay, can I have a motion in a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
The roll call on Resolutions two sixty-eight, twenty-five, and two seventy, twenty-five, council members, Brick Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
That item's been approved.
Okay, can we have the Economic Development Director present her items?
Good evening, council, um, I will be presenting Resolutions two seventy-one through two eighty-three. The first resolution is for the Urban Enterprise Zone Strategic Plan. This is a five-year strategic plan, this is now a requirement by the Department of Community Affairs uh, within the Urban Enterprise Zone Authority. We receive about one point five million dollars a year in UEZ funding. This is distributed through a set of programs. The new requirement is that we actually draft and get public input on a five-year strategic plan and identify programs within that plan and make sure that whatever we submit to the authority, that it aligns with this plan in order to draw it down from that one point five million. This plan was prepared for us by the Nishwain Group, they couldn't be here with the change i- in the schedule. I will also say that this plan has been posted on our website, it is under the UEZ webpage. The public comment period will be open for at least thirty days on this plan. So within the plan, we identify the UEZ boundaries, we also have an opportunity to look at if we need to redefine any of the boundaries. A reason to redefine the boundary would be if something, for example, in our case, if there was a park, if we added a series of other development areas that we want to focus on, or if we're not no longer looking for focus in a certain area. So what you're seeing right now highlighted in the teal is the actual UEZ boundary that stretches from the Carroll Road all the way down going to the end, close to Rock Avenue coming up here. And then it also goes down towards where we would notice where we have the Millenburg Complex over here. What you're seeing with the red dots, each business can register as a UEZ business. That will look at the possibility of instead of conventional, um, taxes, the six point six something percent, we're looking at a three point five percent. What we did to prepare the plan, there was a number of outreach efforts. The first effort, we started with a series of surveys that were distributed to residents as well as business stakeholders. We received feedback from approximately, uh, or exactly a hundred and fifty-five surveys. We also conducted open houses, we, um, conducted a in-person meeting during our business expo. We went to some of our SID meetings, as well as hosted one-on-one sessions with a number of our business community members. In terms of the feedback that we heard, we heard feedback of some of the challenges in the businesses, what they would like to see In terms of the feedback that we heard, we heard feedback of some of the challenges in the businesses, what they would like to see in the businesses in, in terms of the challenges in the business, the language barrier, for example, with, um, Spanish-speaking businesses, also noting in terms of marketing and attraction for a different, a more diverse set of businesses or variety of restaurants, looking at parking and also looking at the possibility of transportation improvements. So based on what we heard, what was proposed was a series of programs and goals. So one of the biggest things that we heard, make sure that we're focusing on special events. So we're looking at, uh, traction to the city that we're actually marketing the city wi- with promotion. In terms of administration, we also heard feedback that it would be helpful to have a task force established. A task force that would collaborate with our UEZ coordinator and work in tandem with, for example, our Special Improvement District or Downtown Plainfield, as well as our business owners and, and some residents where they would provide feedback on what, on some of the programming that we provide. There was a desire to have more business workshops and also focus on workforce development. Another part that we looked at too, where we mentioned earlier, we have the opportunity to look at redefining the geographic boundaries of the urban enterprise zone. So what you're seeing here, mainly in the gray, that's showing the existing boundaries. In the pink, these are the recommended areas to be removed. So given an example of areas that we thought should be removed, for example, schools were included in some of the UEZ areas. We have, um, certain parks that were in- included in the areas. Things that we were added, that you see that they're in, identified in the blue, these are areas where we have focused on development and there's a potential to attract development in these areas. So what you're seeing here in the yellow is the identification of the new UEZ boundaries. Now, this is, this document is over a hundred pages. Again, it is on our website. It will remain on our website and we will be open for comment for the next thirty days before passing it on and presenting it to the DCA. So at this point, I'm going to pause Council President and ask if we have any questions or discussion items.
Uh, on this specifically?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmembers, any questions on the UEZ presentation?
Council President?
Yes.
Um, thank you, Director, for your presentation. I had one question, um, with regards to the areas that are being removed from the plan. What's the benefit to the city by removing those areas and what is the, um, I guess, what is the, the detriment to the plan for keeping them on? So what's the pros and cons here?
So the benefit is if you remove something, you have to add something back. So for example, if you see where it says a school is removed, there's nothing that we're really gonna get in terms of programming that would support the school. So a benefit, it gives us the opportunity to put programming or resources elsewhere. Um, the cons in terms of what's removed, I think we were able to see how the city has evolved since the last time we defined the, the boundary. So it, it upstates with the condition that's actually within the city and where we wanna focus a- our resources and opportunities.
Any other Councilmember, Mr. Chime in?
I have a quick question. How does this relate to our master plan?
Sure. So our master plan, where this is a five-year document, our master plan, it is looking at a longer horizon, but it, it, it is looking at the next ten years. It aligns in some, some of the goals too. So if we look at the entire plan, it identifies goals that were in the master plan. So if the master plan was talking about focusing on workforce development or business attraction, this is a shorter term for implementation. And identification of a clear funding source. I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
Thank you. And then my next question is, um, how our president is able to comment?
We are going to post the contact, so within the-
So it's gonna be on the website for comment? Is it?
It, yes, it is on the website for a comment. It's on the UEZ webpage and the contact there is the UEZ coordinator and her email and her phone number are listed. Did we lose Councilwoman Cherry? Did I miss any parts of her comment?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. And the other Councilperson wish to, uh, chime in on this?
I have a follow-up, um, Council President. Um, Director, you said that DCA Department of Community Affairs requires a five-year plan. Is this an update to an existing plan or is this a new one? So when was the last one prepared?
This is a new requirement from the DCA.
A new requirement. So this would be considered our initial submission?
Yes, it's.
Okay, and if adopted, it would be in place for five years?
Yes. So the term would be from twenty-twenty-five to twenty-third.
Okay.
The President?
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman.
Yes, two quick questions. Uh, one, what are some of the resources for attracting businesses? And the second question is, uh, will we have a town hall where residents can come to the presentation and submit their questions in person?
So the, some of the tactics for attracting businesses, one that we're coming up with right now is our retail recruiter that those funds were actually paid for by the UEZ funds to make sure that we're reaching out to businesses. We're inviting them to come look at our commercial spaces that are available. Towards the end of this summer, we will be having a commercial pa- s- commercial space showcase and tour where we'll be inviting local businesses and national businesses to come see what we have available in Plainfield i- in terms of locating here. Um, we are, we're going to end up with a marketing guide. That's one of the deliverables from our retail recruiter. In terms of an open house and comment, we did host several open house events when we were forming this plan. So that was a part of the surveys. They were able to come and contact and comment in person. Right now, we are accepting written comment on this plan.
Thank you.
Um, question, um, you said that you're accepting open comments, um, maybe it, suggestion? Maybe you should have like a QR code available that maybe the residents constituents, um, could take advantage of. That's just a suggestion. And the other question is, um, what is the benefit to the city to have residences in the UEZ zone?
The, mainly the benefit is actually to the businesses itself because they get a lower, um, tax rate. And in terms of the attraction and capital funds that are available, so when I say the sales tax rate, in- instead of the conventional one, we're looking at the three point five tax rates. That's if you are a regi- a registered business. And then we're, the benefit to that business too is that they, it could help them with their capital needs as well. So that re contributes to the city of Plainfield's economy in general in terms of traction and the businesses there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so now, eh, with your permission, um, Council President, I'll move on to my other items.
Please.
Okay. So I am looking at Resolution two seventy-one and two seventy, excuse me, two seventy-two and two seventy-three. These were resolutions that are being requested to be pulled by the Plainfield Housing Authority. So please remove Resolutions two seventy-one dash twenty-five, two seventy, two seventy-two, that's twenty-five, and two seventy-three dash twenty-five. The next resolution looking at two seventy-four, this is a resolution for, uh, area in need study to be conducted for two twenty-nine dash two thirty-one Prescott Place. This is a area need study requested for what we would consider a undersized lot in a residential area. There was a request made to us by a resident to look to take advantage of the small homeownership lot program to create an affordable home on this site. Next resolution, Resolution tw- two seventy-five, this is looking at fifteen hundred dash twelve West Third Street. This is a resolution to conduct a area in need study for a relocation of a charter school. Resolution two seventy-six, this is a resolution, all the studies that I have presented so far have been non-condemnation redevelopment study. This resolution is a condemnation redevelopment study. All the parcels that are listed here are mostly on our abandoned, vacant and abandoned list and they have tax liens against them. And this is an opportunity to look at redevelopment of properties that are underutilized, right? Item number two seventy-seven. This is for, uh, not, also now we're moving back to a non-condemnation resolution to designate a area in need. So we've already done the study at this point. Now we want to move forward with designating an area in need for Block five thirty-three, Lot eight, Lot nine. Should you designate this area in need, we're presenting the redevelopment study for this. It would move on to direct the planning board to develop a redevelopment plan. Two seventy-eight looks at Block one thirteen, Lot nine. This is adding to one, an area where we've already conducted the studies and it's been amended into a plan. This is just adding an additional lot for more parking options. Two seventy-nine, this is a designation of a redeveloper for a mixed-use area. We are looking at fifty-two units here, six of which would be workforce affordable units. There would be seven hundred and fifty square feet of commercial, forty-four parking spaces with a community benefit of fifty thousand. Resolution two eighty, this is a resolution to amend three oh six Watchon Avenue. This is originally a fifty-five unit development. What would change in terms of what we're amending is originally, we were looking at five workforce housing units. Now the men would, would go to eleven workforce housing units. Originally, there was a community benefit of one hundred thousand dollars. This would now be a community benefit of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That one hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be used to commission a mur- a mural prepared by Alonso Adams and I'll refer to that in a later resolution. Resolution two eighty-one, this is a resolution to an amend an agreement with nine fifty-three to nine fifty-five West Fourth Street. The only thing that would be changing into this agreement, originally, we did not have these identified as eight units of parking, eight, eight, eight units of apartments, eight units of parking, but those eight units are now identified as all workforce affordable units. Resolution two eighty-two, again, it refers back to the resolution of three oh six Watchon Avenue, which is two eighty. This two eighty-two is to commission our artist's mural. This could, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars would pay, be paid for by the community benefit previously identified. Resolution two eighty-three is authorizing the lien placements for the cleanup of eleven properties. These eleven properties are to remove the debris on those properties. That concludes my presentation, Council President.
Okay, questions from Councilmembers on any of these resolutions?
Yes, real quick, uh, Director, for Resolutions two seventy-two and two seventy-three, um, are, are those taken off so that adjustments can be made or amendments can be made?
Yes. The agreements are not ready to be presented yet.
Okay, so they're, so they're coming back?
Yes, they are.
Okay. That's it for now.
Others?
Uh, Council President, I'll go since no one else was ready. Um, on two seventy-eight, you mentioned that you're adding additional parking. What was the original plan? What is it going from what to what?
Um, they're, haven't proposed it right now. They've looked at the study, but this is supposed to be a mixed use. We haven't presented the concept yet. This, this gives them the opportunity to expand. We have not presented that redevelopment agreement where you'll have the full description.
Two seventy-nine, um, you said sixty-two units as workforce. Is that correct?
Fifty-two?
Fifty-two?
So fifty-two units and six would be workforce. I'm sorry, I heard sixty-two.
Okay, so fifty-two units and only six is workforce.
Yes.
Of that fifty-two, what's the parking?
The parking is forty-four spaces.
For fifty-two units?
Yes.
Have we talked to developer about making it one-to-one?
We have, but it's always presented as that's the preferable option.
Okay, so does that mean presented to the developer as the preferable option or presented to us and then we, we indicate that that is either, that's something that we would like to see?
So it's presented to the developer when we're negotiating and this is the concept that the developer would like us to present to the council tonight.
And we can counter that, correct?
It's your choice to choose whether to authorize the designation as is or not. And if you're, there is a request for an amendment.
Okay. Two eighty, fifty-five, fifty-five units, um, going from five workforce development now to eleven. On that, do we have a parking, a parking designation?
This parking designation, so we are not amending it right now. The parking on this one is thirty-five. So what's being presented right now is not the parking amendment.
Okay, um, two eighty-one, can you talk about what is the parking for that one?
Eight, it's one-to-one.
One-to-one?
There's eight units, eight parking spaces.
And two seventy-six, on the, the lots that are listed, you indicated that they're all currently vacant and abandoned. Is that correct?
For most of the lots that are here, yes.
Most or all?
So there's what, all of them are currently vacant and all of them are not being used. I would not classify one of them as being abandoned.
I'm, I'm gonna pause there, Council President. I'll let, I'll let anybody else have a question, come back. I'm I'm gonna pause there, Council President, I'll let I'll let anybody else have a question, come back.
Councilman White, go ahead.
Yes, uh, back to the parking, as we know, parking is a huge issue within our city. Um, so how would that work if we approved this? And everybody has a car that moves into the unit. So would there be a lottery and say, okay, hey, there's not enough parking spaces for you, where would the people park at? How would that work? I just don't understand, not having enough parking spaces.
Are we talking about a specific resolution?
Yes, we are, one second, I'll go back to it. So there's thirty five parking spaces for, was it fifty six units? Do you remember that one?
What so which resolution are we talking about?
One second, is it two eighty one, how many units are there?
No, two eighty one, it's eight units, eight parking spaces.
Okay, well, two, it was fifty six units altogether. How many parking spaces was it? Which resolution is that one?
So I believe you're talking about.
Twenty five.
Two seventy nine, that's twenty five.
So two seventy nine has fifty two units, forty four parking spaces.
Forty four parking spaces, okay. So knowing that we have a a major issue with parking within our city, why will we approve this one here and not send it back to them and say, at least do one to one? Although many of the apartments may have two cars, but one to one is that should be the bare minimum.
Sure, so currently, there is the legislation that's been approved for point eight parking. In this particular one, we have approved for our transit-oriented development redevelopment plans that if this development is within a half a mile of a train station, and this is particular one is within the Plainfield Train Station, that the parking requirement is point eight. So we have approved a statute for point eight for this. So they the developer has proposed what's allowable within this redevelopment plan as of right. What is thought about when we had this redevelopment plan that if you are living within a half a mile of a train station, you have certain tenants that don't have a vehicle at all, and that condition does exist.
Thank you, uh, more questions? Okay, Councilwoman Cherry?
Thank you. For a resolution two seventy nine dash twenty five, is there anywhere in that area that we could afford or avail parking?
Um, yes, we have other municipal lots that are in that area. So currently, we have lot five and that's the lot that's right across from the police station. And uh it's I think it's actually less than a block away.
So with this uh resolution, can we add parking in that lot for those residents? And revise it, so it could be one to one?
So we wouldn't have to revise this actual proposal of the concept to make the parking available. If if you're saying that you're looking for the resolution, but any resident is allowed to get parking within our municipal lot.
So within that municipal lot, can we provide a parking permit?
Yes, a parking permit.
For the remainder residents for the fifty two slash forty four.
Yes, there's eight spaces available.
Thank you.
But Councilor, there will be a cost for that. We don't give away free parking in city lots. As the director said, anyone can park in our lots.
Questions, comments?
Yes.
All right, hey, Councilwoman.
Uh, question, um, two seven two dash twenty five, relocation of the charter school. Which charter schools being relocated? And where is doing to dust? Where's that going? Is is it just doesn't exist anymore or where where's it going?
Councilwoman, you said two seventy five, right? So two two seventy five, that daycare no longer exists. They they have sold that daycare. So as far as I know, I don't know if the daycare is itself is being relocated, but they have sold that property to a a charter school. The charter school is Crest Haven Academy.
So Crest Haven Academy is not gonna be on West Seventh Street anymore?
The five through eight grades are going to be relocated, should this be approved.
Fifth through eighth grade, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, uh, back to parking, right? You don't mind? I understand uh the point eight requirement, um, that is a state guideline, is am I correct in saying that?
Mm-hmm, yes, you are.
So, but when we look at the reality of our constituents, our residents, um, very few uh work in uh New York City. Very few uh commute to New York City, and even if all of them worked in New York City, they still need a car to get around the state of New Jersey, uh particularly uh food shopping, um, what what we uh uh with Jersey Shore and 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 other things like that. It's just hard to get around uh even our city without a car. Um, and I guess to not require, but just say, uh, you know, for, wha- is it realistic to have our residents park a half uh half a mile away or quarter mile away, especially on uh rainy days, um, and 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 during the winter and the snowstorms? And I know that we can't combat that parking requirement because it's a state guideline. Uh, but what 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 sort of message can we send to our developers to give us uh moving forward uh one-on-one parking?
Okay, so we are not proposing that they park a half mile away or a quarter of a mile away. What this is saying, if you are within a half mile of the train station, we have already adopted a redevelopment plan. So it's an ordinance that allows a point eight parking rate ratio. Um, in terms of this particular development, we're looking at if there is a need for additional parking less than a block away. There's an option in a municipal lot.
Sure.
In terms of the message to our developers, we have adopted plan that was vetted with the council and I understand that some of the council members weren't weren't on board when it it was adopted. But the these are adopted laws that are available as of right and in- incentives for when they're looking at how are they going to finance their development. They're really weighing out the po- parking options and and the concept here. I I will say that we have the conversation with developers about looking at the one-to-one and the conversations that we are getting back is that there are stricter requirements in other cities and they are bringing back to us, this is allowed as of right.
And doesn't that ratio change when uh don't they allow, I guess, um, allowances for electric vehicles as well?
Um, you get a credit for electric vehicles, for example. Right now, we have in our ordinance that you are required to provide fifteen percent of your parking spaces to be uh electric charging stations that are there. Should you pro- by providing that, you can reduce your parking requirement by ten percent. I can say that most of our developers actually don't take advantage of reducing it by that ten percent.
Sure, sure, sure. All right, yeah, I just wanted to get a a better understanding um of of our parking situation that we have here in our city. But you know, this is the feedback that we get from our residents, um, but that's it for now, thank you.
Uh, Director, I had a a follow-up because I wanted to make sure that I wasn't conflating two issues. So the point eight that you referenced, is that you said that's a state guideline or is that state law?
It's state legislation, so it's been adopted by state legislation.
Okay, and then we adopted that in our ordinance. Is our, so being that the state has set the standard at the point eight, does that mean that our ordinance cannot be different from the state standard?
It it can, it can differ.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Director Fields, my last question, what is the cost per parking spot?
So the parking spot, the requirement we have in ordinance, are you asking for the municipal parking spot or the parking?
Yeah, earlier, earlier, the mayor said that it would be at a cost.
Mm-hmm, um, for residents, it's forty dollars.
And then that would be considered revenue for the city?
Yes.
Further questions?
Yes, just one more, so this doesn't allow for visitor parking as well, right?
No, you only provide parking for the units.
Okay, so, um, Councilman Graham asks, how can we send a message to a developer? If we know that parking is an issue within our city and we talk to our residents and constituents on a consistent basis, I believe the way that we send that message is to vote no on this because it's not right for our city. Just wanted to add that to to us earlier.
And, you know, Council President, with your permission, if I may add, a parking issue is not a unique issue to Plainfield. The parking issue exists all across the county, all across the tri-state area. And it is why development is happening, it's why the state has provided that incentive to spur development. So it is not unique to Plainfield. And, you know, parking challenges mean that they are common, which is no different from when at the holiday season, you see the challenges that people have in finding parking. So when they want to go shopping, they park two blocks away. When you go to the mall, you park probably half a mile away to walk into a store. This is wha- this is the reality of the situation. A parking challenge is a good problem to have. It means that you have people in your city, people in your downtown, they come into your area, they invest in your city. And so I have a different opinion about this than probably most.
I just I just had a follow-up, so I guess for me, like, this this issue of parking is an issue and the residents, you know, have have made it clear it's an issue. I don't know if saying voting it down is the way in which we fix it and and let me explain why I'm saying that, and that's why I was asking clarity on what is law, right? So if the state, if the state has already put together law that says point eight is the standard and we adopted that ordinance that said point eight is the standards, they are in fact presenting their plan within the guidelines of what we gave them. I think if, so they're coming to us saying, I'm playing by the rules of the rules in which the city gave me. Now you're asking me to do something which you haven't changed your own law. So there's that fine line for me, whereas are they doing something within the law that allows them to do it that we've adopted ourselves as a city? So maybe the answer for me on the back end is, do we then change the ordinance? But right now, what's presented in front of me is, what's on record is we said point eight is the standard. So that's that's why I wanted to get clarification, so I could um make a determination based on that.
And because of that, and unfortunately us denying, if that we could get sued, right? And they'll still get their way. It's kind of how in in um our corporation council can like confirm that.
Councilman Graham, um, Calvin Souter, uh, Souter Law Group, I am redevelopment council or one of your redevelopment councils for the city. Um, but the analysis around being sued because of this and and having a significant chance of losing that lawsuit and it being punitive to the city would be significant in this scenario. Um, having someone follow the rules somewhat to a T, um, and then telling them that they cannot do that poses significant constitutional issues.
Thank you, sir.
So why is it presented to us for a vote? If if they followed the rules and the law to a T and they did everything possible, then why can't they just skip this layer of bureaucracy and say, you know what? You did everything towards TV, followed the guidelines. Point eight is what it is, although you are elected to represent the people within your city, we follow the state guidelines. So why not just override this level of bureaucracy here?
Um, we come to you for advice and consent. That's why these things have to be presented to the governing body.
I I would just, again, this is Calvin Souter, I would like to know, uh, Councilman White, that there are municipalities in this country that do just that. When you do follow the rules and you can show that on paper, there there are bodies that will then give the authority to approve it to typically the Director of Economic Development or someone in the the Planning Office. Uh, that is an option that the city would would have if this if the council made that the law. Um, but it is, it behooves the city to seek the consent and advice of city council and I I believe that is what is happening here.
Thank you, redevelopment council. Further questions? And we will get to figuring out which uh which of these we want to remove from the voting block. So, uh, I will allow any council member to uh state which one they want to remove from the voting block and the remainder will, the the voting block will stand, we'll vote on that and then we'll vote on the separate items separately.
Question, uh, Director Fields, you said it was forty dollars a month, is that what you said?
Yeah, i- it varies per lot, but that lot that's there in lot five is forty dollars.
Okay, and there's gonna be permits, um, and how many permits are gonna be allowed? There's gonna be permits for that?
It it's till the lot is full. And so I believe Councilwoman Cherry to ask if there's uh to enough space available to cover the difference currently there is.
Okay, just a concern, you know, if people really want to walk a half a block from their home, just just a question.
So President, two seventy nine dash twenty five, can we go on that separately?
Okay. Any others?
No, no, ultimately, it's the market dictates, uh, you know, the 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 survival of uh any of our developments. If a person uh chooses to uh sign a lease, knowing that they have no parking, that is totally on, you know, that person, that is their rational, educated decision. So, you know, I'm good.
Council President?
Yes.
Uh, because we're in the uh voting portion of the council meeting, uh, there was a request to withdraw resolution two seventy two and two seventy three for report. Could it need a motion to withdraw those two items from the agenda?
Can I have a motion in a second? Okay, all those in favor for withdraw of those two motions, say aye. Alright, any abstentions or objections? Opposition, okay. So those two have been formally removed from the agenda. Okay, so we have two seventy-nine, uh that Councilman Wyatt has removed from the voting block. Are there any other proposed removals from the voting block? You know, I am, there is a a a matter here, I just look. For two seventy-five dash twenty-five, uh I am going to abstain from. So I'd like to move that uh from the, from the voting block as well, unless uh I could just note my abstention and and go forward. Yeah, let's vote on separately. Okay, so I think we have a summary of of the one, the 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 voting block, and then two items that we'll vote on separately.
So it would be a motion to approve two seventy-one, twenty-five through two eighty-three, twenty-five. Two seventy-two and two seventy-three have been removed, two seventy-five and two seventy-nine.
That can't.
Alright, those in favor for the voting block, say aye. Any opposition or abstentions? Okay, the voting block uh has been approved. Now let's move to the separate items.
Uh Resolution two seventy-five, twenty-five.
Alright, motion in a second, please. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bridge Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt. Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Abstain.
Favorable abstention, resolution has been adopted. We now move to Resolution two seventy-nine, twenty-five.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bridge Jones.
No.
Cherry.
No.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt. Vice President Sessions.
Stane.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
Three in favor, three oppose, one abstention, resolution fails.
We now move to Department of Health and Social Services items. Uh Department of Health and Social Services, uh please present your items.
Good afternoon, good evening, Council President. I have three items. Resolution two eighty-four, twenty-five, which is an agreement between the City of Plainfield and um the County of Union. This allows for us to access our HUD funds as we are part of the consortium with Union County. This is done yearly, so we we do this every year. Resolution two eighty-five, twenty-five is a resolution to extend our health educator's contract by one year. We both mutually agree uh on the job that's being done, is being done well. And so we ask for support on that. And finally, Resolution two eighty-six, twenty-five is a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with United Way of Greater Union County and the City of Plainfield Women Infant uh and Children with Program. This, this, this will allow uh for recruitment, onsite recruitment. It will happen, uh I think, believe, one day a month, uh and there's no cost to either institution as it's funded by the grant. Those are my three resolutions.
Questions from council members? Okay, can I have a motion in a second? Okay, ro- roll call on both, on all resolutions of the Department of uh Health and Social Services.
Roll call Resolution two eighty-four, twenty-five through two eighty-six, twenty-five. Councilmembers Bridge Jones.
Yes.
Cherry. You're muted.
I'm sorry, Council President, I need to abstain from two eighty-six dash twenty-five.
Okay, um.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, this will be two eighty-four and two eighty-five, we'll go on to eight separately.
Okay.
So Councilmembers Bridge Jones on two eighty-four and two eighty-five.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
We now move to Resolution two eighty-six, twenty-five.
Motion in a second.
So move.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Bridge Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Stane.
McCray.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Councilperson Hockenbeck.
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstention, resolution passes.
Okay, thank you. Uh the Department of Sewer and Solid Waste.
I have two resolutions for your approval tonight. Two eighty-seven dash twenty-five is a resolution authorizing an award for one year with Mazel Mulch. It's a look, it's a disposal site where we take our vegetated waste. And uh the amount is not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty, and thirty cents. The other resolution, two eighty-eight dash twenty-five, is a resolution uh authorizing uh governmentdeals.com to do a auction for our vehicles that are no longer uh worth um repairing. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Questions from council members?
Yeah, real quick, with regard to uh two eighty-seven dash twenty-five, um I guess, what? At that cost, um are we are we saving money or? What's the alternative? And as that, is is Titten Falls the closest uh place where we can drop off our uh vegetation?
Yeah, uh it's a good question, Councilman. Um unfortunately, we don't have any large disposal sites locally. Uh we do have disposal sites, but the cost is far exceeds what Mazel charges. So Titten Falls is the closest. The number that you see there is a projected number, we uh unfortunately had a big storm, so that number is going up, but uh we don't anticipate spending all of that, but it's a far cheaper price than we could get locally.
Sure, alright, that gives me a a great understanding of it now. Thank you, Director.
Further questions? Alright, can we have a motion in a second?
That can't.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call Resolution two eighty-seven, twenty-five and two eighty-eight, twenty-five. Councilmember Bridge Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
And Council President Hockenbeck.
Yes.
Alex Everest, those resolutions have been adopted.
Okay, uh we now move uh to ordinance on first reading. Adam Deputy, please read MC twenty twenty-five tw- dash twenty-six by title.
MC twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six is an ordinance to amend Article seven, Rules and Regulations concerning animals by adding section fifteen, horses on public ways.
Okay, let's have questions from council members regarding this ordinance.
I I want, I would like to table it.
Council President, am I, am I gonna get an opportunity to speak on the ordinances, to present the ordinances?
Take that opportunity now.
Okay.
So we're not doing questions?
She she's gonna answer the question.
And Council Presidents, there were questions raised regarding the legality of the ordinance. I'd happily uh speak to those as well.
Okay. I'm sure that there's, there's questions that everybody has, and you can probably preempt some of those right now.
Should I do what I normally do, like go through them all?
No, we we're just on the horse.
Okay. Okay, um so the first ordinance that we are bringing to you tonight um is an ordinance amending the rules and regulations concerning animals, and this is an ordinance to be as least restrictive as possible. It's, it's not to ban horses in Plainfield, it's just to in the, in the least restrictive way possible, ensure public health and safety around the horses that are in Plainfield. So what we're looking to do is require a permit for horses in Plainfield. Um just like we do when you're using parks or anything else, that we're, we're just looking to install, institute a permit policy. Um we'd like to make sure that the horses have their vaccines, and we'd like to have just be aware of when horses are going to be around in Plainfield. We did review other ordinances that other municipalities have regarding this topic. For example, Atlantic City has a very similar ordinance to this in which they require a permit. Newark also requires a permit to have a horse. Um in Patterson, there isn't even a permit process, it's just banned. Nearby in North Plainfield, it's banned except on certain trails. We felt like that would be too restrictive. We didn't want to point out anywhere you can't have a horse. We just simply want to institute a permit process. Um and so I I just wanted to explain that because it sounded like maybe there was some confusion about what it is that we're trying to do here.
And, Council President, let me just add this, add some more information onto that. Um, as the business administrator said, this has nothing to do about banning horses. And there were a number of people who spoke, and the pediatrician who spoke, I agree with almost everything she said in terms of what horses do for kids, and there were others who spoke to those things as well. And I don't think we're at odds as far as those benefits are concerned. Where we are at odds is the fact that we have a license process, a permitting process for dogs that weigh twenty-five pounds, fifty pounds, a hundred pounds, forget. In the same way that we can have a permitting licensing process for other animals, why can't we have a permit process for an animal that wears, weighs well over a thousand pounds? And so I think the idea that we are seeking to ban horses is absolutely totally false. And the idea that this is, is, you know, retaliatory, no. But when things come to our attention, we certainly have an obligation to act. We should not wait for bad things to happen before we act. And so it's about health and public safety. And I would urge you to not let what you heard earlier influence you into thinking that this is retaliatory. Because we currently have a process for dogs and cats and other animals. And all we're doing here is instituting, instituting a license process for horses. That's what we're doing. We're not banning horses. Um there are stables all around Plainfield, and I think it's a wonderful thing for kids to be able to go to stables and pet horses, or fat riders and so on and so forth. But just imagine, from a public safety point of view, that you have someone riding a horse on Front Street, and you have six or seven kids walking behind and trying to pet that horse. That becomes a public safety nightmare, and that's something that we have to be very careful of if we were to allow people to just indiscriminately ride horses across the city without any controls in place. And that's all we're trying to do. Horses will not be banned in the City of Plainfield. It's a licensed permitting process that we're trying to institute, and that's what I wanted to share with you.
Uh Corporation Council, I think you wanted to chime.
Yes, I I I'm gonna probably cover a lot of, some of the same ground, and the, I think the mayor and and the business administrator said it best, but I'll do, I'll do my best just to add that any legislation uh coming out of this governing body uh is only valid if it, if it addresses the health, welfare, and safety of the community. And what does that mean, the health, welfare, and safety of the community? Well, in Plainfield, if you want to sell a hot dog on the street, you need a license. If you want to have a, a five-year-old's birthday party in a public park, you need a license. To say, as the mayor said, to have an animal like a horse on potentially a narrow city street without any knowledge of it, without anyone in the city knowing about it, with anyone knowing who is, who is uh riding this horse, whether they have the requisite experience is dangerous. So I think if we're willing to, to regulate a hot dog, we can certainly have a regulation for, as the mayor said, a thousand-pound horse. Um and um, you know, I, at this point, if there's any questions, I think all of us are ready to answer them.
I just also want to clarify that this is a free process. Um I I know there were some comments about financial burden. Um and also I know there were comments about July fourth, and we absolutely still intend to have horses with the permit in the July fourth parade.
Okay, so uh with regard to um this um ordinance that requires um anyone uh wanting to ride a horse to have, to get a permit, are there do's and don'ts? Like, what are the do's and don'ts when riding a horse in Plainfield, you know, outside of the ordinary, uh cleaning up after your pet, showing uh proof of vaccination, right?
Yeah, well, the, the actual regulatory process, as in any license within the city, falls to the clerk's office. In this case, it will be the police direct, the, the, the ultimate deciders in this case will be the Director of Police and the city clerk. And they will be tasked, as they are with every other license, to come up with a reasonable set of regulations in order to achieve, in order to receive that permit.
Alright, so right now, we don't, we don't really have that, right?
No, because as we've done with every other license, that's always a function of the clerk's office.
Right, and the do's and don'ts don't necessarily uh speak to um one's experience in riding a horse. They just own a horse, and if they want to ride that horse, even if they just purchased the horse, with the permit, they can do that.
If they get a permit, I mean, obviously, they'd have to meet the standards set by the police director and the clerk, but if they met the requirements, they can ride their horse, yes.
And if I could just add to that, uh one of the reasons the ordinance isn't so restrictive, um in looking at the application, there may be determinations that the police director of public safety maybe want to make special accommodations. For example, if you say no horses on Front Street, yet you're going to have somebody put in an application uh for funeral procession, and they want to have uh horses on Front Street and public safety determines we're gonna, we have a need to shut down Front Street, and we're gonna have police personnel directing the procession through. But if you put in there times uh different locations that you can't be, then that doesn't give the uh police personnel and public safety the flexibility to be able to accommodate the type of uh request that's being.
Now, with this permit, uh the permit, you're asking to ride your horse on a specific day, right? When you apply for the permit, is it for, is it for a specific day?
That would depend on their, their request. It could be requesting a specific day, time, it could be a block party in which they want to have the horse just be at the block, or it all depends on what the applicant is looking for. And, you know, if, if somebody wants to put in, if they want to ride the horse all week long, that might be something that public safety might want to take into consideration versus one day for one hour.
The only thing I'm trying to figure out is, if I apply for August twenty-third, if I owned a horse and I wanted to ride my horse, and it rains on August twenty-third, I'm not gonna ride my horse. Do I have to come back and apply for another permit?
I think it's the same as if you apply to have a barbecue at a city park, and then it rains. And then, you know, you have to figure out a rain date, and then do the process for that.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out like how user-friendly this process is going to be uh moving forward. You know, uh for our horse riders who've um, I guess, um have been extremely responsible with their horses. And I'm I'm assuming that this uh ordinance is aimed at any future bad actors, right? Because we haven't had any that I've heard of and I asked around, we haven't had bad actors. So this is uh to deal with any future bad actors. But I want to make sure it's good feeling. Uh, uh, so um, maybe perhaps if we can um consider just um having uh the license process so that, hey, the city knows uh who my horse is and the city has my horse's vaccination records. And um if the city is going to restrict where uh horses cannot be ridden, then we kind of just go by that, right? I mean, it's it's, is, there's a, there's a lot that we, I guess, you know, can uh do to make this ordinance very user-friendly so that it doesn't, you know, uh it doesn't become frustrating because, you know, again, if I take out a permit for August twenty-third, it rains on that day, I'm not bringing out my horse um on that day. And furthermore, if it's a, if it's a heat wave, if I'm a responsible uh horse owner, I'm not bringing my horse out on on a ninety-degree day. It's it's dangerous for my horse.
I I think councilman, just to answer your your question, I don't, the the goal of the ordinance was not to be overly prescriptive. Because we felt that the clerk and the police director should have some latitude in making decisions to ensure, to to be as flexible as possible for those who wish to to ride horses. Um, the concern would be if we are overly prescriptive on streets, timeframes by council, it may actually hurt those folks more who really want to ride. Um, if we give it to the clerk and the police director, they can make decisions in real time to make sure that they can, they can evaluate these riders and make sure that they have an opportunity to do so.
Exactly, and I just want to add, in terms of the streets, councilman, that you said, you know, we could just ban it on in certain areas, which is, it's pretty much what North Plainfield does because they only allow it on trails. We felt like in, you know, when when we were drafting this, we felt that that was too restrictive. Um, you know, to just say, okay, I have like these four, four streets that that you can ride on. We wanted to make it as accessible as possible. We didn't want to restrict areas, except like what um the clerk said, times, et cetera. So um, we're really just trying to keep it as open as possible.
You know, I I I I hope this uh ordinance um encourages horse owners to cut, to to come out and do shows in our pedestrian plaza for the children. Um, to to go into our neighborhoods and really, you know, teach our children about the horse culture and introduce them to the horse culture and and other things like that. So I, you know, I'm I'm hoping that this ordinance can be made into, make the positive light be made out of this ordinance.
And just to, just to respond to a a inquiry that you had. Um, majority of our licenses have rain date uh options built into them. Uh, that's number one. Number, number two, there are various licenses that have to go to various different departments and divisions for approval. And that's what makes, you know, some certain licenses you have to have in two weeks in advance, a month in advance, two months in advance. Uh, this license, like the B A said, is a very straightforward process. It's filled out of my office, it's sent to the director of uh public safety, I'm sorry, the police director. They try their best to accommodate it as long as it's a reasonable request and the applet and the permit is issued with no fee and no charge. So it's a very simple permitting process.
Hmm, yeah, yeah, I uh, I I I could agree with you, but I I've said a lot. So if I have any more to say, I'll wait until others are finished.
This permit, this permit, you finished, um, councilman? You finished, councilman? Okay, all right, um, this permit process, um, is that per horse, per horse? Or is, is it a group rate? Or, you know, like the crazy horse riders, is it a group rate or is it per horse or?
There's no fee.
No rate, no rate, yeah.
There's no fee at all.
Oh, okay, and um, and the next question is and I heard from the constituents that they were saying they've been riding years ago. What happened years ago and it just came about? What did they do years ago? About a permit?
Well, we've never had a permitting process.
Okay.
Um, and I think with increased horse riders, I, you know, I, it's it's come to light and it it should, it's it's my recommendation, I think it's my legal recommendation, it's a recommendation of this administration that it's certainly permissible and should be permitted, but permitted subject to a license. We license everything, you know, and we do for good reason to make sure that there's safety on our streets and that's the goal here.
And to answer your first question about how many horses, it would be per applicant. So if you're an applicant and you fill out an application and you want to have three horses for a special event, that would be considered one application and one permit.
Okay, okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, councilman.
So the B A mentioned that the horses will be required to have vaccines. Could you talk more about what that looks like?
So we would want the health records of the horse to make sure that it's up to date with the vaccines. And that's something that you would likely submit with the permit. With the permit application, I'm sorry, not the permit.
Okay, so there is a, the horses will have to require, you will require some type of documentation to show that the horse does not have any illnesses or will be spreading anything.
Correct, correct.
So um, and the permit process, I'm gonna assume it could be within twenty-four, forty-eight hours?
I think our, you, AJ, what, oh, sorry, what is our usual turnaround time there?
And I'm asking, and I'm asking that because, you know, should a funeral home want to, you know, have a procession at the last minute and City Hall is not open, what accommodations will the administration do if it's not Monday through Friday? And or a constituent may want to do something on a Saturday or Sunday?
I know that we do a lot of permits, obviously, for the weekend events, but also I know that in a funeral situation um, or an urgent situation like that, myself, the city clerk, the police director, I mean, you know, we don't, we don't shut off our phones on the weekends. So it's something that we would be able to get done.
And let me also add, counselor, all of my cabinet members are familiar with the two-four-eight rule. Which means responses are to be given within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. And they're very familiar with that rule. And so we can turn things around rather quickly and that is the expectation.
Hey, don't like me.
Thank you. Well, I'm I'm glad to see that it's not a ban and I'm glad to see that there are some parameters around the public health. Um, the last question I have is about the public safety. How will we inform drivers? So, you know, somebody like me, I know not to blow a horn next to a horse. Um, how do we educate now our community now that we are, you know, because they've the horses have been on the street? How do we make this a little bit more safer?
I think that's a great point because I I've actually learned in the last month that you're not supposed to blow your horn and I I didn't know that. So I I think it's not reasonable to expect that all um, that all drivers know that. And I think that it would be a great campaign for R P D to take on to just, you know, we could put it on our electric signs and we could put it, um, we could go to the senior center with it and do some sort of campaign around safety if you see a horse in the street, safety for drivers.
And and quite frankly, uh, business administrator, I had a conversation with Counselor Cherry about that. And there's certain things that that ought to be done by government and other things that should be done by nonprofit and animal rights organizations and so on. And I don't know that that's a role for us, quite frankly. The permitting process is certainly a role for us. But, you know, in terms of the question that's being asked by the councilman, I don't know that that's what we should be doing.
And to to also add to that, I I think that is exactly the intent of of this ordinance. There's a big difference between riding a horse down Front Street with a lot of vehicular traffic and uh horns and buses and, you know, you put an app, an application for that. Public safety will see that a lot different than someone requesting to have a horse in one of our parks where there's not going to be a lot of traffic or a lot of people around. So when you're looking at those applications, you're looking at at those type of accommodations and reaching that determination.
Thank you.
So, any, any more questions?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Um, so as I understand this, um, well, before I ask, ask my questions, um, one of the callers had had asked me to acknowledge on the record that I had received some um, some comments regarding uh, not allowing or some concerns about horses um, on Plainfield streets and not necessarily the horse itself. I think the concerns came more so from um, the impeding of traffic and how the rider um, was conducting themselves. So I I acknowledged that on the record that I did receive those inquiries and I will always acknowledge on the records, both sides of the calls that I received, those in support and those against. Having said that, um, I have a few questions. So with regarding the permit process, uh, we are talking about permits for events where someone wants to have a horse, correct? We are not talking about, I want to take my horse out and ride down whatever, whatever street because that's what I want to do. You're saying that that part you cannot do, you cannot just casual ride for your own personal transportation down any public street in Plainfield. The permitting process is about events. Is that correct? Did I understand that correct?
I think that it's very, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
The process is about riding in the public right away. And A J and you can weigh in in terms of how the ordinance was drafted, but it's about riding in the public right away.
Councilwoman, I I'll address that. Just on the plain reading of just the, the way the ordinance is written, you could put in an application to ride down Front Street. You may not get approved for that. They may think that's not the best place. But you certainly have the right, just as a rider, to put in a, 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 like, put in for a license to ride on whatever day, you know, down whatever street you wish to to put, to put in an application for. That doesn't mean it's gonna get, gonna get approved, but there's no prohibition on any specific uh public right of way. It just requires a license.
And you would have to do that for each time you want. It's not like an open-ended license. Every time you wanted to take your horse out, you would have to apply for a permit for that.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, there's certainly, I mean, I I I could envision a situation where the clerk may accept a permit for a multiple of days. Um, he could do that. However, we would need to know the days you're gonna ride. I think that's important. I think that's important for public safety to know when you're out with your horse.
Okay, yeah, I think it wouldn't be indefinite.
Right.
The other follow-up question was about, I heard it mentioned, and I think I read this too, that health records would be required of, um, so that the city had some knowledge of the animals' um, health records. I'm assuming that we do the same with dogs and cats. Would that be true when a person comes and applies for a license for a per license for their dog and cat? Is that, we do that for both?
That is correct, yes.
I just wanted to see what, if there was parity in that process. Um, the other thing was I read, um, there were some pretty, um, there were some fines listed while, you know, you referenced that there and there's no cost to the permit itself, the permit is free. There were some fines that were noted. I think it was five hundred, fifteen hundred and three thousand. Um, what would be an example of the the violation that would require those that fine scheduled to be implemented? And how did the administration come up with that dollar figure? Is that um parity to, you mentioned Newark and Atlantic City, which are major cities? Like, where did that dollar amount come from?
I can't, I won't speak to the, to the dollar amount. I think the B A can speak to that, but I can, I can at least speak to the idea that just the the fines themselves are only for riding without a permit. There is no fee associated with any application for a license. Um, those are ju- merely for unlicensed riding within the limits of the city. Um, and our only obligation when it comes to fines is that they not be considered arbitrary, capricious and unreasonable. And that is only determined by a court of law if we were to be challenged. In my recommendation, these are not unreasonable fees for riding a horse in a city without a license. Uh, but the B A may want to o-offer more information on the, on the fee.
I just want to add that since we, our goal is to make this process as easy as possible and free, that we are hoping that these, you know, that the public is encouraged to come, follow this process and therefore these fines are, you know, not not, we don't have to give them, but also we wanted to make them prohibitive enough to encourage you to to come get a permit.
So, the, and thank you for that. Again, you always want the, the, the least restrictive process. Um, and I can appreciate that, but to to the question, can you speak to how was the dollar amount determined? Is there parity with other municipalities?
Yes, this, this, this was uh taken from center, this valley. I think the logic behind first offense, a second offense, a third offense is if, if you get a and and there, and there could be warnings by discretion of the police department as well. Um, similar to traffic violations, you can be issued a warning. Uh, but if if you have a first offense and you were warned and you have a second offense, that means that you're just choosing to not follow the ordinance. If you have a third offense, you 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 basically are saying at that point that you are just willfully not complying with the ordinance. And I believe that's why other municipalities have instituted first offense, second offense, third offense as well with higher fines associated with that.
Council President, I had a question regarding the conduct, um, and in terms of.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, I see the fines scheduled, but I don't see anything in here that really talks about the conduct. And I did hear um, the administration talk about holding up traffic. Now, would that be something that would be considered a fine if they're holding up traffic?
No, they would not get it. No, the only thing that would issue a, the only thing that would precipitate a fine is not having a license.
And not cleaning up behind yourself and?
No, not even that. I mean, that's not the way the ordinance is written. Um, now, you may not, if we, if the police be become aware that you are not being a responsible rider, not cleaning up after your horse, then they may not want to issue you another license. Um, but as far as this ordinance is concerned, the only fine is associated with riding without a license.
So let me get this correct. So a, a horse could defecate in the street and not clean up and there is no fine?
The permit process.
I'm only asking because that's how the the ordinance is read, is?
Yes, because there's a lot of discretion in the permit process be, and the permit process, just like the park permit cross process may need, like for the parks, you have to put a cleaning deposit because we were getting people who we were having to clean up after them. And so then you put, you know, your cleaning deposit down, which you get back after you've, you know, your, your time has expired and and we didn't have to go clean up after you.
So I just want to make sure I'm I'm hearing this correctly. So if there's a horse on one of the side streets and the horse defecates, it is definitely not a fine if they're not cleaning up behind themselves.
It it may be a loss of license. It may be as part of a regulation that the clerk's office comes up with to say, listen, you, as part of this license, you must clean up after your horse. Failure to do so will result in your revocation of horse and possible uh, loss of any um deposit that you put down. Um, that's something that the clerk could do. But this ordinance itself, just what's in front of you tonight, only addresses just the, just creates the license so that we now can create, the clerk's office can create regulations associated with that license. If that's something the council wants to see, I'm sure the clerk is here, he's hearing you, he'll make sure that that's part of any application process.
And I believe that's.
I think that the challenge that I'm seeing is in this ordinance is I see that there's there's, there's language in here about the conduct and then there's also penalties. And it does sound like there are some kind of like policies in here that between the city clerk and the police are putting in section fifteen dash. Fifteen dash five, five, colon, five, colon, fifteen dash one. I see that, but I don't see anything about the conduct. And I'd like to see a little bit more language.
Well, that's to to Councilman Graham's concern that there is that it becomes more prescriptive. The more we add to it, the harder it's going to be for folks to get a permit. So our goal was to make it as flexible as possible so that we could have riders in playing field. And that the clerk and the police director would have that flexibility to make sure that the responsible riders will have a chance to ride in playing field. The more we add to this, the harder it's going to be.
I'd also like to note that this ordinance is on first reading. And if adopted tonight, it would be a de minimis change to add there, to add into the ordinance. That if you would like to see a fine or some type of language for picking up after your horse or a fine if you don't pick up your horse. Can be added to the ordinance upon secondary.
Thank you, City Clerk. That that's exactly what I would like to see. I mean, when we talk about the public health of our community, I I think that that. That verbiage needs to be put in this ordinance.
That can start, that can be added on a motion to amend.
And also talk, and I'm I'm going to assume, City Clerk, you're going to add the information about the conduct as well?
Yes, we can have a conversation about what what exactly you mean by conduct, conduct, and we can add that to the ordinance for secondary. And those will be considered de minimis changes.
Also, I just want to clarify that this ordinance does say, you know, I mean, I mean, I think you're talking about consequences. But it does say that, you know, no person shall allow a horse to urinate or defecate on any public street, right of way, or any other public property of the city. And no person shall leave a horse unattended in the right of way or other public property of the city. So I I think what we're talking about is the consequence of doing that, which we could, we could add.
Yeah, that's the part that has to be tweaked because every horse is going to urinate because you got to, your horse has to stay hydrated. And, you know, you can't prevent horses from defecating. But, you know, just like whatever our dog ordinance is about cleaning up after our dogs, you know. That's that's why we walk our dogs. So. Yeah, that would need to be tweaked.
After your dog will result in fines.
Yeah, we have that ordinance. From last year.
Do we want those motions tonight or one second reading?
I I I think a more comprehensive look at at the language would be better to be able to have a more comprehensive. Thorough language added to that as opposed to making those amendments right now.
Same table, they come back to it.
Can I make a motion to table this until we have some correct verbiage?
Back in.
There's a motion and a second on tabling this. Okay, let's have a roll call.
So motion to table ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty six, Councilmember Bridget Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray. Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Wake up.
Councilwoman Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hocken.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we now move to MC twenty twenty five dash twenty seven. Okay, Deputy Clerk, please announce that. And afterwards, Madam BA, please explain the ordinance.
MC twenty twenty five dash twenty seven, is an ordinance of the city of Bill, County of Union, State of New Jersey. Amending and supplementing the city code so as to amend Article thirteen, Chapter seventeen, colon, thirteen dash twenty two. Which shall be entitled Affordable Housing Development fee ordinance.
Okay, Madam BA, please explain.
Thank you, Council President. So this is a really exciting ordinance, and I'm I'm very happy to. Speak on this. This is an ordinance that would allow us to create a. A grant process for homeowners to be able to be eligible for grants from ten to twenty thousand dollars to do repairs. And the goal here is to keep people in their homes. So what we're seeking to do is add a fee to developers. And this would be two point five percent of their construction fees for commercial properties. One point five percent of their construction fees for residential properties. And have charge that fee, put it in a trust account that we then use to issue grants to homeowners. Ten to twenty thousand dollars for repairs on their homes. Not cosmetic repairs, but repairs that, you know, will let them be in their homes safely. It's kind of a twofold, it's it's, there's two great things here. The first one is that it, the the, if you have a hundred percent develop, if you have a hundred percent affordable. Building, then you would be exempt from this. So it incentivizes developers to do a hundred percent affordable. And then it also allows residents to benefit from the developments that are not a hundred percent affordable. In that they will be eligible to receive this grant money for home repairs. So it's, I want to give a lot of credit to Director Fields. It's very innovative. It's, I I think, an incredible benefit for residents, and I'm really excited to hear, you know, what everyone has to say.
Okay, questions from council members?
Two questions. So is there an age requirement and also is there income parameters? I know that there is, you know, I know in the past there have been grants afforded to seniors. So just want to know those two questions, age and income.
There is no age or income requirement for the recipient of the.
Councilwoman Sessions.
So I I think looking at income would be some. Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the city. I I agree, and I I think this is the highlight of the evening, and I hope it doesn't get lost in the. Conversation about the horses, but this is, this is a very good thing for those who. Need that financial support and and can't, and it helps us to keep them in our home, in their homes. I'm thinking about those on fixed incomes that, you know, have roofing issues and and other major repair issues that, you know. It's just cost prohibited. So I want to say kudos to the administration for this. I'm I'm extremely excited about this. However, there are those people in our city who who can afford some things, and so I I would just, you know, take a pause. To ask that we consider perhaps an income, a ceiling in terms of, you know. Those that that can afford. So I would want that to be considered. And then my other question was, as we continue to talk about community engagement and having the residents be a part of the solution. As they say, those closest to the problem are best with the solutions. If there would be some consideration to have an advisory board. That was made up of some residents that could work with the administration to review the applications. I think that would be a good marry and allow us to engage residents in the process. So those are my comments on that. And again, kudos to the administration because I think this is amazing and awesome. And definitely fits my mode of community engagement.
Councilwoman, just to add to the question and go back to Councilwoman Cherry and and Sessions. We, with this, what we're required to do with DCA is that we have to create a guideline for administration. So in our guidelines, we can identify income thresholds, we can identify. And and we have to identify an administrative, whether we choose to have a consultant. Or we have a task force or a committee body for identifying how the funds are distributed.
Awesome. Congratulations.
I also support the income guideline, because if a person or household. Makes plenty money, they have to make a repair on their house. They can get financing and other things that they could, they could afford those payments. So that's not a hardship for them. So yeah, if we could work on the income guidelines, that would be awesome.
President. Yes, go right ahead.
In addition to the community benefit agreement.
Please repeat your.
In addition to the community benefit.
Yes, this is in addition. So this is completely separate to the community benefit. That's no negotiated with each development. This would apply for every single development, whether they're designated as a redevelopment or or not.
And whether or not they get a pilot, right, Director?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
On the covenants, are there restricted covenants on this trust money to the residents who apply, who apply?
So the restrictions have to be identified in our guideline. So that after, should you adopt this ordinance, then we are responsible for to identifying the guidelines and restrictions. And how this gets administered administered.
And I know we were talking about the affordable housing and and now would this apply to the housings that already exist? Now as well?
In terms of what could be repaired, it's for existing house. Yes.
I think.
I just want to, this would apply to.
Were you asking if this will apply to developments that already exist?
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to clarify.
I wanted to know.
No, it has to be moving forward. We have to adopt the ordinance before we can apply the one point five and two point five.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Twenty twenty five, twenty seven, Councilmember Bridget Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hocken.
Yes.
Okay, Madam Deputy, please read MC twenty twenty five, twenty eight by title.
Madam Deputy, you're muted.
Oh, I'm so sorry. MC twenty twenty five dash twenty eight is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the County of Union. Granting a tax exemption with respect to certain property identified on the city's tax map as block five forty eight. Lot nine, nine fifty three dash fifty five, West Fourth Street, Plainfield, New Jersey. And authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with MUBRAC holding urban renewal LLC in connection therewith.
Okay, Madam BA, explain this.
Okay, this is an ordinance seeking a tax exemption for a building at nine fifty three dash fifty five, West Fourth. This is going to be eight workforce units and eight parking spots. And what we're asking for is a fifteen year tax exemption with accelerators. This property currently gives the city five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars of tax revenue annually. That would be moving to twenty two thousand four hundred dollars annually if if this is adopted.
Okay, questions from council members?
BA, did you, you said twenty two at fifteen years?
At twenty two thousand four hundred per year.
How many years?
That's the tax, that's the taxes we would start to get on this property that we currently get five thousand seven hundred and forty dollars on.
At at year fifteen, what does it look like at year fifteen?
There are.
Phase then completely to conventional taxes.
Say that again?
At year fifteen, you phase in completely to conventional taxes.
Okay, so what I guess the question I'm asking is that every year for fifteen years, twenty two thousand, or are you incrementally going up?
So right now, you we have the option of getting ten percent or phasing in, for example, twenty percent. Forty percent, sixty or eighty by statute. So whatever is greater, that's we 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 will get. It will always be greater than that twenty.
Thank you.
More questions? Councilwoman Briggs? Oh, okay. All right, can we have a motion to adopt this on first reading?
So moved, second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bridget Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hocken.
Yes.
MC twenty twenty five, twenty eight is been adopted on first reading.
Thank you. Madam Deputy, please read MC twenty twenty five, twenty nine by title.
MC twenty twenty five, twenty nine is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the County of Union. Adopting the downtown East Front Street redevelopment plan amendment dated July second, twenty twenty five.
Madam BA, the floor is yours to explain the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. What this ordinance is seeking to do is to adopt the redevelopment plan. That was adopted at the July second, we develop, the July second planning board meeting. And this is the East Front Street redevelopment plan. We're seeking to add educational use.
Okay, questions from council members? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
Okay, roll call, please.
Roll call, MC twenty twenty five, twenty nine, Councilmember Bridget Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hocken.
Yes.
That unanimous ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Madam Deputy, MC twenty twenty five dash thirty by title.
MC twenty twenty five dash thirty is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the County of Union. Adopting the West Front Street and Clinton Avenue redevelopment plan amendment dated July second, twenty twenty five.
Okay, Madam BA, floor is yours to explain this ordinance.
Thank you. Similarly to the previous one, this ordinance seeks to adopt a redevelopment plan. That, an amendment that was voted on at the July second plane, uh, planning board meeting. And this would be a change to the West Front Street and Clinton Ave redevelopment plan. That we are seeking to change the bulk standards and add commercial and restaurant footprints.
Sounds good. Any questions from council members? Okay, motion in a second. Roll call.
Roll call, MC twenty twenty five, thirty, Councilmember Bridget Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Wright.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessions.
Yes.
Council President Hocken.
Yes.
Unanimous, this one's going to not put on first reading.
Okay, Madam Deputy, MC twenty twenty five dash thirty one by title.
Immuted.
Still on you, Deputy Clerk. There you go.
MC twenty twenty five dash thirty one is an ordinance of the city of Plainfield and the County of Union. Adopting the TODN North Avenue redevelopment and amendment dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, Madam BA, the floor is yours to explain the ordinance.
Okay, this is another amendment that went in front of the Planning Board. And this is seeking a amendment to the TOD North, TOD North. TODD North Ave redevelopment plan to add the parking criteria for the recreational uses over in that area.
Okay, questions from council? Saying now, entertain a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Don't move, second.
All right, roll call please.
Roll call MC twenty twenty-five, thirty-one, councilmember Bridg Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessons.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That unanimous ordinance has been adopted on first reading.
Okay, Madam Clark, please read MC twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two by title.
MC twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two is an ordinance to repeal certain parts of chapter sixteen, A section one, schedule one, no parking.
Okay, uh questions from council members? I don't think that needs an explanation, but if it does, uh. Can I ask any questions? Okay, motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Roll call MC twenty twenty-five, thirty-two, councilmember Bridg Jones.
Yes.
Cherry.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Wyatt.
Yes.
Vice President Sessons.
Yes.
Council President Hockaday.
Yes.
That unanimous, this ordinance has been adopted on first reading, and that concludes ordinance's first evening.
Okay, uh uh we'll move to general comments. A total of thirty minutes has been allocated for the same. Uh, if you wish to be heard, hit the hand icon, dial star nine, raise your hand to be recognized. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is not open.
Hey, good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Name and city?
Uh, Joael Mercado, Plainfield, New Jersey. Uh, good evening, Council and Mayor Matt. Uh, thank you all for hearing me out. Um, everyone earlier today uh spoke on the health benefits and history of horses in Plainfield. So I'm going to skip that part, um since I truly believe it's not about horses to begin with. And I know that you guys are all smart enough uh to. You guys are all smart enough to not believe that. Um, I was born and raised in Plainfield, um resident of thirty years. And I've never heard of any problem with horses. What I do know is that horses were recently used as part of a political campaign opposing the current administration. Um, this ordinance, whether intentional or not, feels like retaliation rather than a genuine public concern. Um, public safety concern. Um, regardless how you feel about horses, we should all be concerned. When the government uses legislation to silence or discourage civic participation. This is more than just horses, it's about democracy, fairness, and the right of everyone to be seen and heard without retaliation. And if it, if this is actually about horses, then I think Councilman Graham's suggestions, like license versus permits is a better idea. And less restrictive, uh you don't need to know the days, just that no bad actors are in play. Um, and perhaps permits for those that don't have licenses at the moment. Um, but like the councilman also said, there's never been a buzz regarding bad actors on horses. At least not to the extent to warrant this response. And the attorney also said that this ordinance is due to it recently being brought to the city's attention. So what exactly happened? Uh, like I said earlier, the only thing that comes to mind is the recent election. Um, are you guys going to mention any incidents that may make this ordinance make more sense to the public? Um, I'm grateful that it's been tabled, but the point is that it shouldn't be, it should be tabled indefinitely. Unless you can provide actual stats about how this, it how it's affecting public um health and safety in the Queen City. Um, we should have, we have so many issues in Plainfield. Um, but we're going to concern ourselves with something like this that's not actually a problem. Like I said, it's not really hard to see what's actually happening. Um, I'm gonna pivot and say that I look forward to reviewing the Plainfield U E Z report. That the Department of Economic Development went over this evening, um and comparing it to the master plan and providing comments. Um, I also want to mention that the Plainfield Special Improvement District is hosting their live jazz event tomorrow in downtown Plainfield. On Front Street and Park Ave. So that's all. Thank you, and have a good night, y'all.
Thanks so much. Next, uh. Next caller.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is Richard Anderson. I spoke earlier this evening. I have a question in regards to when uh the date was that the uh this ordinance for the horses. Was initially uh drafted. Just trying to get a timeframe as to when. The uh, the ordinance began, the draft of the ordinance began. Is that of public record, and is that a something that we could know?
All right, uh thank you for your comment. I'll have Corporation Council answer that if you can. At the conclusion of public comment. So thank you for your question. I'll have it answered, okay? Thank you. Okay. Name and city for the record.
Yes, hello, Marie Anne Sarri, Plainfield. My goodness, the horse discussion was grueling. I so appreciate all of the speakers, what professional. And informed people they were. Um, since this government clearly is determined to get involved with horses. I suggest the following. My concern is the safety of the horse. And as Councilman Graham said. Weather affects horses. Consider a one-time registration period. That way you know who the horses are. There should be oversight of the horses. No hot weather, no cold weather, no icy streets for them to slip on. Consider asking the riders for input. They're your experts. Let's collaborate here instead of trying. To get back at someone. Um, I mean, how many horses are we talking about? The safety of the horse is much more important to me. Just so you know, I am a registered nurse. I have a bachelor in nursing. My specialties, among other things, were infection control. And behavioral health. And I learned long ago that the connection between. People and animals is very important. Children learn compassion usually from their first pet. Um, I do not believe in demonizing one animal for another. As seemed to have been done when the issue of cats was brought up. Um, actually. Well, spayed, neutered, vaccinated cats are incredibly healthy. And so many people uh look forward to taking care of them. Um, as far as what they can spread, well. Every single animal, including the animal, the human animal. Needs to be kept in a state of physical and mental well-being. And free from abuse and exploitation. I have since January spayed, neutered, and vaccinated. Sixty-four cats in Plainfield. On my time, my dime, with the help. Of my nonprofit organization. They've been wonderful. In doing the cats. I educate the people, I talk to them about keeping cats in. Um, we've decreased the birth of kittens. But we still do have a problem. I was told at least a year ago. That funds were going to be included in this budget. I contacted uh Director Brown. He believes it has not been approved yet. So I really would appreciate knowing if funds are available. I have saved the city over ten thousand dollars. Uh, from January through now. That number of sixty-four is way higher. I usually do about fifty a year, so.
Council President Speaker, time is up.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Rosen, uh. Rossen, uh name and address, name and city for the record. The floor is yours.
Hi, um, this is Dan Rossen from Plainfield. Um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, I I'm not gonna take my whole time. I just wanted to say thank you. Um, for reconsidering the ordinance. For the parking ban that was on my block. Um, beyond just reconsidering it, um, I've had, I had a lot of communication with several of you. That are on this call tonight regarding it. And I know um that my neighbors and I feel very heard. Um, for you reconsidering, and I know when, once you do an ordinance and pass it. Um, nobody really wants to go back and reconsider it, but I, it's just for me, um, my comment is about gratitude. So thank you so much, and that's really it. Thanks.
Very welcome. Okay, Miss Chambliss.
Good evening, uh Quone Chambliss, Plainfield, New Jersey. I just wanted to uh. Thank you for the discussion about parking. Thank you, Councilwoman Sessons, for the questions that you brought up in terms of what is legal. And what is recommended, or what is the policy as opposed to um. What is, what is legal, because I think that is important. Just because the state sets a minimum. Does that mean that we have to honor the minimum, right? When I think of education, there are basic things that a school has to do. And then you have some school dishes that go above and beyond. As long as they meet the state's basic minimum, they're good, but nothing says that it can go above and beyond. And I think that's a good question as to ask, well, what is it that says that we, as the city, as the city of Plainfield. Can't go above and beyond to meet the needs of our residents? When I think about how that water was coming through the other day, imagine parking so far away from your home that you have to walk. And you get caught in something like that. So we really need to reconsider making sure people can park. Um, within a safe distance from where they live if they're trying to run to go seek shelter. And the other thing is just because something is lawful, it does not mean that is, it is, it is expedient. And so for some of you to sit here and not believe. Or not associate. And not understand why the public would believe that this all of a sudden concern about. Large animals on the street came about when these large animals have been on the streets in Plainfield for decades. And you need to be honest with yourself and honest with the public, that it did not become an issue for you. Before this last election. And that is why you look petty and vindictive. And nothing that the mayor can present or say, and the BA can back him up, and the lawyer can back them up. Because all of them would stand to lose had Mr. Wyatt won, so I got you, rep your team. But be honest that you weren't thinking about horses, you weren't thinking about their weight. You weren't thinking about any of these things that you wrote into this new amendment until after this election. If they need to be regulated, fine, regulate them. But be honest as to what made it come to your attention, that after all these years, it needed to be regulated. Everybody have a great night. Thank you for your response about these recent storms. Shout out to Ms. Bethia and the work that her organization is doing. She is really being tried by fire. I'm not sure if she knew. That this is gonna be dropped on her doorstep a couple months after she was put in this position, but um the sister is doing a good job. And um, thank you, but be honest. You guys have a great night. Talk to you later. I love you all so much. I tuned in from Nashville, Tennessee, but it had to be said. Ta ta.
Okay, Miss People Bar. Name and city?
Yes. Nancy People Bar, uh Plainfield. It is with a respectful and heavy heart that I speak tonight. I pray that my words come out with compassion, dignity, and gratefulness. My block faced a devastating event on the evening of July third. The deaths of two passerby who were just minding their own business, driving through my block. Strangers we never met in life, but strangers whom we meet in death. There are no words. Rest in peace. I have prayed for you and your loved ones, and I also pray for the two ladies and their families that just recently passed away. I want to say thank you to all the first responders and people who reached out to the neighborhood. You all know who you are. I especially want to thank my neighbors, and one in particular who was a good Samaritan. Who was first on the scene and saw and did some things that neighbors should never have to do or see. I will not go into details out of respect for the deceased and my neighbor. I hope that the first responders get the counseling that they may need. I am asking the city if there are any counseling services available for the neighborhood residents and family members of the deceased. If they are needed, and I also ask that on behalf of what people went through just recently. I worry about the traumatic impact this could have on the children in the neighborhood and their parents, and the possibility of post-traumatic stress disorder. Setting in the future. It creeps up on you, and PTSD symptoms can be subtle at first, and then it testifies, intensify over time. I am not sure what exactly the city can do, but I wanted to make you aware that we're still living with the aftermath of July third. We have disaster tours. Cars sometimes block the roadway, gawking at the site. I don't know who is responsible for removing the second crushed car off the street. I saw that some of the huge trees pieces removed off the sidewalk just recently, and that is the start for us, but there's still more. Especially the car. There is a memorial, and there was a service last week, but many of us were afraid to attend. Because another storm was approaching with thunder and lightning, and it was cut short. Whatever the city could do would be most appreciated. I know there is still a lot on your plate with these two storms, and I appreciate all that has been done. And this is an extraordinary and tragic circumstance for all. I thank you. I also am concerned now for the safety and um health about. Um, we didn't get warnings. Um, we need to go back to the siren warning system like we had in the past. When the Greenbrook rose to a certain level at the Rock Avenue Bridge, sirens would sound. We would hear the sirens of Donellen, Greenbrook, North Plainfield. We need a siren alert system to keep people safe. If, if your electronic devices go off, there's no way that you're gonna know that a flood is arising, and there's no way. That we're gonna know, except for if we have a si- uh siren system. So I would ask the city to look into a new alert system that can be done. And to help residents be sure that they're safe throughout the city of Plainfield. I experienced the nineteen seventy-three flood, and this flood. Reached areas that were never reached before, especially like by national starch where my father was the um plant supervisor. There was never water there. He never got called out in the middle of night.
President?
Thank you.
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. People Bar, those, your comments are so on point, and we thank you. Uh, for speaking uh about what happened on Myrtle Avenue. And for mentioning the two deceased women in Cedar Brook Park. You know, we, our, our hearts go out to them. Uh, our community is still reeling from those, from that loss of life uh and the subsequent damage. And uh, and I just thank you for, for having a heart for the community as always. Ms. Gilbert, name and city affiliation, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes, we hear you now.
Okay, thank you so much. First of all, let me say good evening to all of you. Um, and glad to see that all of you have weathered the storm. And are able to be in your seats tonight. I send my condolences to those who lost loved ones. By the grace of God, they didn't touch us. But I want to talk to y'all tonight because. Couple of things, uh, 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 I don't want to be long, but I do want to talk to you about a couple of things. To all of you who commented on this, this, this whole idea about parking and. Whatever with different uh uh buildings that were being built, let me say to you thank you. That you did not accept something just because it was laid before you. You got through the fat and got down to the bone and made it squeaky clean till you understood. You got through the fat and got down to the bone and made it squeaky clean till you understood what it was supposed to be. Then you found out that the state had passed whatever, but you did not have to accept it that way. That's not the way it was presented to you, but you asked enough questions that you got that understanding yourself, and I am so proud of y'all for doing that tonight. The second thing I want to talk to you about, and I hope that you continue to do that, the second thing I want to talk to y'all about is this ordinance about the horses. And you talked about the fact that it would obstruct traffic and those kinds of things. Well, that has been tabled. But while it's been tabled, I want you to consider that while you're talking about horses obstructing traffic, let's talk about these here great big trucks that ride around here with people's pictures on it during election time with lights on it, because that's obstructed traffic too, and it's a possibility that it could cause people to have accidents because of the size of it. So what governs those trucks? What governs the size of those trucks? What governs the, the whole idea of those trucks and where they ride and when they ride? And I think something needs to be put on the books about those trucks, irregardless of who they're riding for, by, or about. There needs to be something put on the books about. I want to also talk to you about those grants. The grants that came up tonight. We have two grants that are already in the city. So I would hope that you would take those grants and put them side by side with the grants that are already on the city books, and see how they differ. If there's a difference, if there's a difference, so be it, but if there's not a difference, would somebody be able to get both of those grants, or you just get one? Because if I'm not mistaken, there's one grant that the um I think the, 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 the total amount, the highest amount you could get on that one is twenty-five thousand dollars, and I heard about this grant.
So much, uh, Trisma, name and city for the record, floor is yours.
Trisma, Plainfield. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm glad I'm after the young lady that just was talking because my concern is also about the grants. Um, the um suggestions for, the suggestion about a salary cap, which is good. But my concerns is the salary cap always interfere with the middle class. Everyone that gets something now in Plainfield, either they're below a certain level, so they're getting everything, and anyone above, they get what they need. But the middle class is hurting here. My area is so congested. People are talking about they don't have parking. I can't even park in front of my house. Um, Seventh Street, I see kids dodging big trucks since they put all of these, I don't even want to say humps, they didn't put mountains on every block around. Everybody is speeding up and down that highway. There's homes there. People still live there. The school, I mean, the trucks are just running by. There's no police. No one gives out tickets. No one stops them from running. I have to sometimes help children cross the street. And now y'all stopping them from coming. Now you got these motorbikes that all night long, that's going up and down that street, speeding, going around, hanging out there while homeowners are trying to get home, and and my block, we are sitting and watch because there's a lot of elderly people there to make sure they're getting in or if they're okay. During the time of the um flood and of the um torn, of the tornado, I was helping out my neighbors because no one came there. I was going back and forth to the police station, getting them ice and water, because nobody delivered anything to them. It's like we have forgotten area right there. Everything else is being beautified. Everything, my block is so raggedy. There's nothing there to stop people from running up and down and being up at night. Music, there's so many houses now that are made into apartments. You can't even see the street. Something's gotta be done about that, too. Don't forget about your middle class. Some people want to stay right there. Nobody don't want to move off somewhere else. Okay, and as far as the grants, is there gonna be another grant that we have to pay you back? You gonna have a piece of the home? Is it a grant gonna only be for why, if you need some help with a, a wire, whatever, matter of fact, what if the wire is okay? Maybe the house might need different walls, or might need a air conditioning system, or because it's older homes, or might need some different lightings, or might need closets built in there, because they don't have that, which would stop people from being hoarders. I went to older pa- other people's houses where I helped, because I'm also in healthcare, and their homes are wack. Those are things that we're not looking at. They have boxes and books and everything in kitchens. They have coats and stuff and everything all over their porch, on their side, in their yard, like, I don't understand. We're, we're missing something right here. The middle class is hurting. Everything can't be for those without, because then they end up getting everything.
So, President?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, Laura Miranda, name, city, for the record, floor is yours.
Good evening, Laura Miranda Brown, Plainfield. Um, I will be very quick. I just wanted to say a big thank you to our councilwoman here in the second ward. Um, Councilwoman Sesams has been beyond helpful to us over here in this area, um, in the Pine Street Highland area. Um, PSENG, as you know, has been working diligently on replacing gas lines around the city. They came to a dirt road. They semi paved it, created a little bit of a problem, and Councilwoman, together with the city, um, has stayed on top of that issue, and in fact, as a result of the torrential rain on Monday and the river that ran down Pine Street, the work recently completed by PSENG subcontractors actually washed away, and um thank you to the mayor and to uh Director Abney for putting PSENG directly in touch with us here on Pine Street as we were able to tell them their gas line was semi exposed and a giant trench had opened up in the road, and so while the city has been recovering and services have been directed to those who really, really need it, we were still able to multitask and make sure that we could prevent another potentially large issue with an exposed gas line um on the street. So I just wanted to thank you all for the multitasking, for the incredible job the city is doing. There are a lot of literal and metaphorical fires taking place. Um, and each of us live in this city, as do all council members, and so you must all be dealing with the fallout of the storms and flooding personally. So this is truly just a thank you from a community member who sees the hard work from everyone in the city, from every member in the administration, and from all city council members. Um, I hope that we keep this community spirit moving forward, and um that we all focus on helping one another as we do during times of stress. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Much appreciated. Name and address, name and uh city affiliation, Ms. Popper?
Jennifer Popper, Plainfield.
Go right ahead, floor is yours.
Thank you, council members, for this opportunity to speak. I would like to actually address the residents of Plainfield here based on your vote. Um, according to Resolution two seventy-six dash twenty-five, you voted for a condemnation study that includes the property of the Plainfield Rescue Squad. Back in, I think it was May twenty-eighth, the city accepted a five hundred thousand dollar check from the County of Union for the building at seven hundred West Seventh Street that they don't own. So the council tonight has approved a resolution for the, for the Plainfield Planning Board to now approve, or not approve, a condemnation study for that property. So what happens now? Was that transaction of five hundred thousand dollars uh um legal? First and foremost, legal? Um, I will let the residents decide, go to the planning board and voice your um opinions. That is all. Thank you. Bye.
Ms. Kathleen, name, city affiliation?
Hi, Kathleen. Are you there?
We are. Your audible.
Oh, great. Hi, um, this is Kathleen Nietzsche, West End of Plainfield. I'd like to thank the DPW, the first responders, and all the people that are our unsung heroes that are pulling together in this community during these times of stress. These last two storms have really hit us hard, and it shows us that we can move, move together as a community and help each other. Um, my main concern is maybe if you could address and publicize some communication. Um, unfortunately, I didn't get any alerts for any of the storms, and I'm signed up for all the different towns around me. So luckily, I heard all the different alerts for the towns around me, but nothing came from Plainfield. I see all these different alerts from the towns around me, North Plainfield, Watch Hogs, South Plainfield. Hey, come here. Are you stranded? Do you need food? Do you need help? How about insurance? Red Cross, um Salvation Army? I need to, I would really like to know, where do I get to see these things? We have, um, there's things that are, are publicized about. Go here, look here. Can we put something out on the city council um Facebook and website in Spanish and English? Hey, are you looking for something? Go here, or put a tag, but make it easy to see in these times of stress. Um, I'm concerned about the unhoused people that maybe were renters, and could be, um, maybe they don't understand English, or maybe they're people that aren't very comfortable in asking for help. If we could put out that, hey, there are services available, and if there are, who are they, and where'd you go? And keep them safe. Don't let them go in fear when they need help. Lastly, the, the ordinance about the rescue squad. Um, during these times of stress, and when we have these storms, a place like the Rescue Squad that would be open twenty-four seven, and in other towns were open, stranded people went there. They had someplace to go that was warm, and they were able to get something to drink, and they were able to call their loved ones and say they were okay while their cars were floating down the street. Lastly, I'd like to give a shout out, and just to let you know that those people that died, let them not die in vain. Let us do better. There's gonna be more storms. There's gonna be more trouble. We're a community, and Plainfield does their best when there's trouble, and our community comes together. We have a lot of good people out there. We have a lot of good, we have a lot of helpers. Let's use them and have our, our council people and our city work with them to get the communications open, so everybody gets what they need. Thank you so much, and thank you for all you do. Take care.
Thank you. Ms. Ambrose, name and address, name and uh city affiliation, so use the sign address. Floor is yours.
Good evening. Actually, my name is James Proctor. I'm Anna Ambrose's husband.
Okay.
And I'm a resident of Plainfield. Uh, I would like to say I've been a, I've been a part of many relief operations, both in a professional capacity and as a volunteer, and I can honestly say I've never felt so neglected as a community member. Plainfield has a fiduciary responsibility to ensure the safety of its community members, and you have failed. You have a responsibility to call action the entire city in such devastation. Exhaust every asset you have during such relief efforts. Mobilize every unit, every vehicle, every man, and every woman sworn to protect and serve our city. I have done search and rescue, and I have seen devastation before. I've seen FEMA clear codes and body count numbers written in spray paint on people's front doors, and if we do not change how Plainfield responds to these events, this is where we're headed. Community members have died, and if we don't reevaluate things, more deaths will come. Any loss of life is tragic, and when you could, you know you could have prevented it, it is. It's just tragic. Uh, July third, my brother-in-law started clearing down trees on Putnam Avenue with just our bare hands and saved off down power lines to provide first responders quick, quicker access to roads, and yet no one came. Three days passed, no one came. No power, no canvassing, no emergency services, no rescue or wellness checks. Saturday the fifth, at ten AM, we finally went to City Hall to seek help. City Hall was closed. How can City Hall be closed during a state of emergency? It's ridiculous. Finally, a local council member pointed out me in a right direction due to lack of signage. How could there be no signage? Finally, we get to the OEM director's location, and boy, did I have a lot of questions for him, and understandably, she felt attacked. I introduced myself with a handshake, my name, my address. Where are boots on the ground? No answer. Where's the Red Cross, as you claimed on Instagram? No answer. Where's our emergency response people? Her response is, I pro- I promise you that we're out here, but I asked exactly where. Where is PSENG? Where's the DPW? Where's PD? I offered that I've been all over Plainfield and seen no PSENG trucks, or PMUA trucks, or PNB, or PD stationed at any intersection. Who's tracking this? We need to know. I did rescues at multiple locations, at vehicles on Berkman Street as cars floated by with people. There was no alert system in place. Waters were made impossible. There was no sirens, not one announcement. There was no one out in the field to help us. I have so many things to say. I know there, I only have a short time left.
Speaker's time is up.
Thank you. All right, you've reached your time. Public comment is now closed. Uh, administration, were there any questions that uh were outstanding and needs to be uh answered?
Yeah, Council President, I'd like to speak to um one of the items that was asked, which was about mental health services, and I want to make sure everybody's aware that this is something that the Red Cross provides, is mental health services for those who were traumatized during these storms. So I want to make sure everybody knows, one eight hundred Red Cross, they do provide mental health services. It's not just tangible items. Um, they met with, they met with us this week, and they made that very clear. That's something that they're happy to do, so um, I want to make sure that, that everyone's aware of that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Council President. The last person who spoke. Those comments, given the hard work of our men and women, every person in DPW, every person in our pride department, every person in our police department, our OEM, all and were on deck. We had the services and the support of the state, of the county. PSENG was here around the clock. PSENG had a trailer parked at our command center at our police department. I don't know Mr. Ambrose, but clearly he is wrong, and our people don't deserve that kind of criticism. When they rose to the occasion, every person who worked on these two disasters, and for them to be attacked in that manner is something that they don't deserve. The city of Plainfield stepped up in the face of adversity, in the face of these devastating weather events. And I don't know Mr. Ambrose, but he hasn't been here in Plainfield to see the hard work of our men and women who responded to this emergency, and it pains me to see, or to hear the criticism that was leveled at our employees, at our OEM, at all the people that were on the ground during these two emergencies. And so, Mr. Ambrose, you are wrong, and our people don't deserve the criticism that you just eat on them, because the people in Plainfield know the job that our first responders did. They know the resiliency of our people. They know how much our city came together in a time of crisis, and we did what we needed to do. We responded immediately. We took action, and that is an ongoing task that we continue to work on each and every day. And we will let no one turn us around. This city will continue to address the needs of its people, and I will close by simply reminding everyone that there is a benefit storm relief concert, the purpose of which is to raise funds to support the victims who perish, their families on Myrtle Avenue when the tree fell on the vehicle, and to aid the families of the two individuals who were swept away by the flood on Monday. And we urge everyone within the song of my voice to step up to the plate and to write checks, and to show that we are standing as one community, where we're looking out for each other, and we're gonna take care of our own, and we're asking our partners, our friends, wherever you are, to help us during this time of crisis, and we will continue to stand by our city employees who have stood by our residents and who have done an excellent job in responding to this crisis that we were faced with. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes, Councilman. So I was uh-
So I was um in the floods and what I can say is I saw the opposite of what Mr. Ambrose was articulating during public comment. I saw our fire department conducting rescues. Our police personnel was in the street conducting rescues. Our DPW was conducting rescues and and when I, yes, I I said DPW because I saw our DPW personnel using a loader to put families in the loader to get them home because they could not uh move from where they were. I saw that with my own eyes. So I I I disagree uh with Mr. Ambrose and I honestly don't know where he was. Uh, could he have been in North Plainfield? I don't know. Um, but nonetheless, um, our staff, all of us, uh, our my fellow council colleagues, um, we were doing all that we can to help others um alongside our personnel, our OEM, um, our police department, our first responders. Like the mayor said, all hands were on deck and I actually saw it with my own eyes because I was in the floods. I was in the storm trying to make it home myself and helping others.
Yeah, I'd I'd have to echo those sentiments, you know, um. I also saw PSENG. Uh, I saw OEM handing out waters. I saw fellow fellow council people uh out there helping. Uh, you know, it was an all hands on deck thing and, you know, I won't um I won't discount Mr. Ambrose's experience. Uh, it's unfortunate that that was his experience. Uh, but it wasn't particularly trying uh and unrelenting to weather events that we had. Um, and it is very possible that with the magnitude of of what we experienced that that we weren't able to get some personnel on on a block as quickly as he needed. Uh, I don't doubt that at all. But it wasn't for a lack of trying. It wasn't for a lack of all hands being on deck. People, people helping and it wasn't even their role to help. People, you know, that that's what I saw uh over these past two weather events. Uh, and it was an admirable thing. But at the same time, I'm not going to discount his experience. Uh, you know, it 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 anybody who experienced that and didn't get the help they need exactly when they needed would could experience uh trauma from that experience, you know, and so I feel for Mr. Ambrose in terms of that. Um, so what they say is two things can be true at the same time. You know, I I don't take it personally, honestly, uh as an indictment against our department because we know what we saw and 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 what and what happened out there in the community. But, you know, just just like they say, you know, a- a- any loss of life is 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 unacceptable, right? So sometimes it doesn't even matter how great a job you're doing when you experience a loss of life, you know. But uh
The city of Plainfield is actually working. I agree with you, Council President.
You know, the 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 city was was working and it was working very hard, very diligently. Uh, and and they are certainly be to to be uh applauded by that. Mayor, you popped on. You wanted to say something else?
Did he say he was from North Plainfield? Like he lives in North Plainfield?
That that was Robert, uh, perhaps in jest, uh, indicating that, you know, maybe he was somewhere else. Because, you know, to most people, it was it was visible that, you know, folks in Plainfield, that it was all hands on deck, you know. So uh he he said that in jest, so I I I don't think it's, yeah, I I don't think it's in my mind.
Yeah, I'm just bothered knowing the amount of work that our employees put into these two disasters. And to be attacking that manner is something that as the leader of the city, I just can't stand for that. Because I know what they did and how much effort went into this. And I know that every single person in this city rose to the occasion. Our first responders did an excellent job led by OEM coordinator Keisha, Sergeant Keisha, the dear. And so I have to stand by our employees and all of what they have done. And even by PSENG that did an excellent job rising to the occasion and helping with resources and getting us back online in three or four days. And so I don't know what else to say other than we rose to the occasion. We met the moment and I am proud of our employees. I'm proud of the council members and everyone who played a part in helping to restore some level of normalcy. So thank you, guys. I appreciate you.
All right. Yes, Councilman.
Yes, before we adjourn, um, I request the consent to change my vote on Agenda Item two seventy-six twenty-five from AS20.
Mark, I yeah, I I I'm I'm not sure how to do it, but perhaps counsel or clerk can uh make note of that.
Uh, the Corporation Council can can weigh in, but um seeing that you are the affirmative vote of that, it'd be a motion to reconsider and a revote call on that. So you need a motion to reconsider.
Correct, yes.
Need a motion to reconsider and a roll call on that.
Yeah, from from my perspective, you know, we've concluded business, so uh I think we need a motion to adjourn personally.
Don't move.
I can't change the vote prior to adjournment? So I was looking at Robert's rules. It says as long as the meeting hasn't adjourned, then I can.
We have, we have not adjourned. We have not adjourned yet.
So can I make? There was a motion, there was a motion to adjourn from Councilwoman Sessoms.
I asked the question prior to that.
The motion takes precedence.
So the motion takes precedence. I asked to change my vote, so I can't do that because she made a motion to adjourn?
Correct. There's a motion on the floor.
All those favors say aye.
Somebody's got a second to motion.
Yeah, yeah, Ca- Councilman, Councilwoman Sessoms made a motion. I did not hear any second from any member of council in support of Councilwoman Sessoms' motion. Is there a second?
And if not, we deal with any other motions.
No, that's correct. The motion to adjourn has failed. Are there any other motions on the floor?
So I have to make a motion to change my vote, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Make a motion to change my vote.
A motion to reconsider.
Yeah, so reconsider two seventy-six dash twenty-five. I need a second.
That motion fails for lack of second.
Okay, can we have another a motion?
Be another motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we'll go to a vote. Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. That's good enough for me. Uh, motion accepted and meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming out.